Keep on ranting and running about her at school. She'll...
It's not random. She has kids to come.
I know, but like, if she comes in, she says, "Oh, I just happened to live here." So I thought I could...
Good evening, everyone. This is a public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Evanston. The zoning ordinance empowers this board to hear references from the city council, applications for variances and special uses, and appeals from the decisions of the zoning administrator. Depending on the type of matter, we will either make a final determination or send a recommendation to the city council. I'm Lori Summers, the current chair. Present here with me tonight are board members Mary Beth Burns, Matthew Rogers, Beth McLennan, Scott Gengold, and Andrew Gallimore. We therefore have a quorum. Also present here from city staff are Melissa Klotz and Dennis Moreno. This is a formal hearing, and we have rules that govern our proceedings. Our most important rule is that only one person may speak at a time. It is not just civility, but it is necessary to accurately record our proceedings. Anyone who wishes to address the board regarding any matter on the agenda will have an opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. Our normal procedure is that we hear first from the staff on the documents in the file. We will then receive testimony and other evidence from the applicant or appellant. After the applicant or repellent has completed their initial submission, any person having -- who has a legal interest in real property located within 500 feet of the property that is the subject of the application or appeal may then present evidence, reasonably question witnesses, or seek a continuance of the hearing. Next, others who wish to make a statement regarding the matter may do so at that time. When all opposing testimony and other statements have been received, the applicant or repellent will be given an opportunity for rebuttal or closing statement. Board members may ask questions of anyone offering testimony or statements at any time. All testimony and statements will be under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, we ask that you limit your testimony or statement to your own personal knowledge. When you testify or make a statement, please tell us your name and address, and be sure your name is printed on the sign-up sheet that is at the entrance. Because we do not have a court reporter, it is imperative that you speak into a microphone so that your testimony or statement will be recorded. We are audio and video recorded in this space and subject to broadcast. When all of the testimony, other evidence, and statements have been received, we will close the record and begin our deliberations. We have only three items tonight, but I do expect it to be a full agenda. We do usually jurn by about 10:30 or so and try not to take any cases on -- after about 9:30 or so, 9:45. So we will kind of update as we need to, as we get further along, depending on how things are going. And first up here tonight, we actually do not have any minutes on our agenda, so we're going to skip right to our first order of business. We have two items on old business, and neither of them have been read in, so we'll start with reading in 1826 Lyons Street.
Ricardo Soto, property owner, applies for major zoning relief to retain three dwelling units on one property. The applicant requests to retain three dwelling units on a lot with a total size of 3,823.3 square feet, where 2,500 square feet per dwelling unit is required for a total required lot size of 7,500 square feet. Zoning code section 6854C. The Zoning Board of Appeals is the determining body for this case. Submitted as documents on record for this case are variance application submitted February 1st, 2013, standards form zoning analysis, plat of survey dated January 2nd, 2003, site plan, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, image of property, spark meeting minutes of February 13th, 2013. And prior to the beginning of this meeting, an extra handout was passed out to all zoning board members reflecting the real estate purchase listing for this property.
And that's from staff, not from the applicant?
Correct.
Okay, at this time, could I swear in anyone who wishes to speak with us on this matter? If you could raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, again, if you could give us your name and address before we get going.
My name's Luz Soto, and I live at 1826 Lyons Street.
What was your first name, sorry?
Luz Soto.
And you live at the 1826 Lyons?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And why don't you start, maybe, and...
My brother wasn't able to be here today because he asked for so many days off, so I'm speaking for him.
Okay.
And we basically just want to keep the house, three units, the way we bought it 10 years ago.
Okay.
And the city has been to our house four times already, or three times prior to this one, and everything was always okay until the last visit that they came to inspect the houses when they told us that, you know, we couldn't have the units.
Can you describe who lives in the property?
My brother, his wife, his two kids, my mom, my dad, and then me and my sister on top.
And you described sort of three groups of people, you and your family, your brother and his family, and then your parents. Is that -- does each one correspond to one of the three dwelling units we're talking about?
Okay, and the -- it's my understanding from the packet, if I'm correct, that when you guys bought...
The house was...
When you guys bought the house, the, you know, number of kitchens and bathrooms were -- are exactly as they are right now. You guys have not made any changes to that situation?
No. Each unit has its own bathroom, kitchen, rooms, and they also have their own meters for the water, electricity. It's three separate bills and everything separated into three, ever since we bought the house.
Okay. You don't happen to have any, like, listing information or anything from when you guys bought the house?
No. We had a problem with that because the city had no records of the house, so we had to go and search for, like, the papers, and then we brought them to the city. Because from what I was told that I saw, you guys had nothing on the house.
Who owns the house?
My brother and my dad.
They each own -- they each -- or they were each an owner?
Yeah. They're both -- their names on the lease and everything.
And have -- has your dad and brother ever rented any of the dwelling units to anyone other than one of your family members since they've owned it?
No. It was just us.
No, I didn't see that.
Can I ask a question? What constitutes a...
A dwelling unit.
A dwelling unit for purposes of this part of the code?
As far as zoning purposes go, typically the make it or break it is whether there's a full kitchen or not.
And that's -- I would agree that that's generally how we've interpreted it and applied it on the board as well, is that the kitchen is really what the...
Is there a full kitchen on each floor of this house?
No, they all have their stove and sink and everything. That's why they each have their own gas pipes, which is the gases, you know, we get three separate bills for each unit.
Actually, the rest of the board is -- I hadn't gotten to the back of the packet that Melissa just gave us, and I'm noticing that there is an old -- it looks like there's an old MLS listing on here that does call it a two-flat-with-basement-in-law apartment. So when is this from? Where's this? 2002? Is that when you guys bought the property in 2002? Does that sound... Where's that?
I think there was somewhere else in the documentation that said 2003. Yeah, right in the memo.
Okay, but that -- okay, but the...
Melissa's date is...
Yeah. Oh, it says it closed 1/21/2003. Okay.
Can I ask staff another question? Sorry. It seems to me like this section of the zoning ordinance applies to multifamily dwelling units as opposed to multi-dwelling-unit buildings. So is there any reading of this that because it's a single family, that section of the ordinance may or may not apply?
No. Whether it looks like a single family or not, it's actually based on the number of units in it.
So the sheer fact that it has even two units makes it a multifamily structure?
Correct.
aside, since it is a family using all of the spaces and that sort of thing, but setting that aside and looking long-term into the future, staff does not support the idea of it being a three separately rented unit building?
Given the situation, staff is not making a formal recommendation one way or another. This is a unique situation where it is all one family unit, but the -- from a zoning aspect, it is still three separate dwelling units.
If I said that I saw a hardship based on the consideration in the listing here, that they obviously bought it as a three unit to use for their entire family, but thought that that maybe shouldn't go forward, does that -- I mean, if you take out their family issues and the fact that they're all using that space...
That would be one interpretation of a hardship.
Long-term.
Okay. I'm troubled by the supposition that the listing -- that any information on a listing is assumed by everyone else to be accurate. We all know listing agents aren't necessarily all knowledgeable about all the facts, so there were other professionals involved in the transaction that had a responsibility to communicate to the purchasers what the zoning was for the building and whether that basement unit was legal or not legal.
That wouldn't be checked in any normal process -- any...
Yeah, I...
That wouldn't be checked in any normal process.
I would be shocked.
I mean, my attorney wouldn't check the zoning.
Yeah. I would be shocked if any of the attorneys in the closing looked into that and brought that up.
But is ignorance a defense?
It's not a defense, but it certainly reinforces the nature of this being a hardship situation.
I think there is a little bit of a -- I'm not saying that I want to make this a three-unit thing. I'm saying I understand the specific situation, and given the fact that it is being used by an entire family, all related people, so we're not passing the unrelated people kind of mark that -- I don't know if Evanston -- I think Evanston still has that. So we're not passing the unrelated people mark. So the only thing that's currently in its current use, making it nonconforming, is the kitchen, because the users aren't making it nonconforming because they're all related.
Correct.
So -- and I think there's a degree of ignorance-ish, you know, a degree of ignorance to consider. Like, I would imagine that 75% at least of people that buy houses do not pay, you know, do not go and do what you and I would do, which is go walk into the city and look at all the microfiche and...
Wait, the city has microfiche?
I'm kidding, sorry. You would not believe what my friends ask me when they're, like, looking at houses, what the listing agents tell them, and they believe it.
So I agree with you, but I also have a little bit of a...
Because the listing says an in-law apartment. An in-law apartment doesn't necessarily mean that that is legal, because an in-law would theoretically be kitchenless.
Hmm.
To meet the concept of conforming to zoning.
Don't -- I kind of see that as -- I see it as the listing agent writing it as if it was an in-law accessory apartment, and the listing agent not -- also not doing any kind of due diligence on zoning in Evanston.
I just -- my own two cents is, I think I agree with Mary Beth. I don't think that the listing itself creates a hardship. However, if the property existed this way beforehand and was used this way beforehand and was nonconforming, and it was sold that way and was inspected that way, I -- my view is there probably is a hardship, notwithstanding the fact that I don't think that the document itself creates one.
Okay. Before we go any further, there was somebody else from the public who wanted to speak to us, so I definitely want to get their opinion, and now that we've kind of shared some of our thoughts that we're tossing around, maybe they can...
Sorry, I had another question for staff before we moved forward.
Sure, go ahead.
There are a number of sort of "if you approve" recommendations that came with the memorandum. One of them is a condition on the removal of the unit when the property is sold. Can you just flesh out what the -- what that recommendation means, what you mean by remove the unit?
From a zoning standpoint, to remove the unit, it would require removal of the kitchen, and that possibility could be altered in multiple ways, but the most important thing being that it be recorded with the Cook County Recorder of Deeds so that it is on record and would be found in a title search, most likely, so that this wouldn't occur in the future.
Given that there are three gas meters and three electric meters, it seems to make sense to require the removal of one of the meters as well and one of the gas meters so that it can't be perceived by anyone as being a legal third unit.
I guess the other -- so the other question I had on clarity was another condition -- suggested condition was that a covenant be recorded, presumably with respect to how that third unit is used in the future. And I guess my question there is, do we have -- have you gotten any opinion from legal as to whether we can impose a covenant?
That has been done in the past for a variety of things, including dwelling units that may not be rented out, most often with coach houses.
Okay. Ma'am, I'm going to jump to you now. Sorry for the confusion there.
Does staff know why Property Standards was called out this time, if there were four other visits, three other visits?
As a rental unit, Property Standards does inspections periodically. It was during one of those inspections that it was determined that the basement unit was illegal.
Okay, thanks.
My name is Priscilla Giles, and I think I'm older than both of them, and I can remember people living in that house, three families, as long as I can remember. I want -- I just wanted to say that I feel like if a family has eight or nine kids, there would probably be as many with the grandparents or grandparents, three generations could live in a house and not use more space than those people. I think Evanston is being unfair in saying that and limiting the number of families that can -- or people in a family who can live in a house, and I think that's unfair and could cause people -- and has caused people in Evanston to lose their homes for just this reason. But because I don't live as close to them, although I do know that before they were in that house and before probably they were born, that there were three families there. I'd like to ask someone else to speak who lives closer and can tell you the names of the people, if that's interesting to you.
Sure. Yeah, I know. Hi, sir. I'm going to actually swear you in first before you get started.
Oh, okay.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
I certainly do.
And if I could have your name and address before you begin?
Carlos Sutton, 1821 Darrell Avenue.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'm here to speak in favor of the variance. I'm the president of the block club, the Community Alliance, and as a preceded person, that particular unit has been a three-family unit as long as I've known. In fact, I graduated from ETHS in 1960, and one of my classmates was living in the basement at that time when he graduated from ETHS. I'm very aware of the area square footage required. My other concern was it seems to be a family occupied. I haven't checked with them to see if it's not a rental unit. Seems they were all related. That block has been a hotspot. The police have had to sit in that block for approximately two weeks, 24 hours a day. We had two shootings last year right across the street from them and a couple doors down. I'm here to speak in favor of them of being some of the best neighbors in the neighborhood. The police have never been called to that particular residence for any kind of discrepancy. They've been very cooperative and worked with us as neighbors on everything that we needed to do. They were not designated in any way to be a kind of nuisance or the kinds of things that we were having a lot of problems with in that particular block. If this zoning change is going to require them, I think it was just an unreasonable burden that you should reconsider making them remove the unit from the basement. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Was there anybody else from the public who wished to speak with us on this issue at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to turn this back to the board. Is there anything further from the applicant before we begin our deliberations? None? Did you have anything else you wanted to say to us, ma'am, before we begin our deliberations?
Not really, just that, you know, we want to keep the house. We bought it. We bought it so we can be a family together with our own kind of separate walls, you know? So, you know, that's how we bought it. We bought it with that intention, and hearing this 10 years later is just, like, kind of crazy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to point out, I know on the City of Evanston website, there's a City of Evanston About My Place section where you can enter your address, and it gives you all kinds of information about the property. When I go to the Cook County Assessor site, they do show that it's listed as two apartments, but when I go to the Evanston site, it does bring up three separate units under that address. It shows 1826 Lyons Street 2, 1826 Lyons Street 1, and 1826 Lyons Street. So was there any point where we did recognize this as three units?
City records... City records, city records do not indicate that we were aware of the third unit.
Any thoughts in terms of where to proceed with this one?
I guess I'm curious about what sort of financial hardship, if any, would be a consequence of us downzoning to two rather than three when it's, when they sell it? I mean, it seems like it's a pretty stable situation right now. I'm personally in favor of allowing the situation to continue. But if we choose to enforce some of these covenants, are we creating difficulties for the family at some future point? I'm just, I don't know that we are, but I'm curious, because that would sort of figure into what I'd be willing to agree to.
I guess without significant testimony that we really don't have in front of us, it's kind of hard to say, given the, given the timeline too, since they purchased the property.
Sorry, are, have we closed the record, or can we get a couple more questions to the applicant?
I closed it, but I, I'm open to reopening it if you guys...
Could I just ask you a few more questions?
Sure.
Sorry, has anybody from the city discussed with you some of the other conditions that they've suggested that we apply, like installing a code-compliant egress window in the basement?
I'm honestly not sure. I haven't been there for everything, but honestly, I don't know. I mean, it's, like, all of a sudden, you know, they've been in there, they said everything was fine. And then this last visit is just when everything just came at us, so... And then it was hard, because when we came here, you guys had no records of the house. So, we kind of had to prove that that's how we bought the house, because you guys had no records. We had to go to a place and get the actual sheet. Then we brought it here, and you guys made a copy. So, that's how the city started to get information on the house, because you guys had really nothing there.
So, I'm, just to explain, I think that there's, the, the city is suggesting ways that we might be able to work with you to try to make the situation work out. And one of them has to do with the fact that this basement situation appears to be unsafe. And so, what they're suggesting we impose is a condition that you would make it safe by installing a code-compliant exit windows, essentially, in the basement that doesn't exist right now. Is that something your family is willing to do?
Yeah, I think they did mention something about making the window that we have down there a little bit bigger.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's...
And is that, is that something your family is willing to do?
Yeah, we're willing to do that if we can keep the basement the way it is. You know, it's, we, like I said, we got that so we can be a family and help each other out, you know?
And what, what's the suggestion, I guess for staff? What's the suggestion on parking? Or what's the situation with parking that needs correction?
There are currently three available parking spaces at the rear of the property, but the existing driveway that leads to the curb cut, a portion of it was removed at some point. So, there currently is no access to that parking. So, one way to remedy a potential parking issue would be to reinstate that area of hardscape that was removed so that you can access those three parking spaces.
But does, sorry, does anything in the, in the relief they're requesting require that?
It does not, because they are not looking to increase the square footage of the property or add any bedrooms, additional parking would not be required. It would be solely at the discretion of the zoning board.
Is that curb cut in the picture, the overhead shot that we got in our packet, is that curb cut the one that currently has a car sitting in it, in that picture? That appears to be between 1826 and 1822?
Yes, that is correct.
And then that driveway would continue between those two buildings into the rear of 1826?
Correct.
It looks like there might be another vehicle in that driveway. Do you guys use the driveway, like pull up into the...
No, there's just, it's like where the grass is, there's like a little cement there, so which is technically the driveway, and then it's a sidewalk. The gate opens, but we don't put no cars inside the house, we just use the driveway in the streets.
If you go a couple pages further in your packet where it shows the street view of the home, all the way on the left side where it looks like there's a sidewalk going back, that is a portion of the driveway that's existing. And then the grass that's just to the left of there is the portion of hardscape that was removed.
So, how much hardscape would have to be put back to make that a functioning driveway? I mean, roughly?
Off the top of my head, I would say 150 square feet.
Okay.
I fail to see why we would want to add every surface.
I, I agree, especially in light of the fact that the requested relief doesn't impact parking, or parking isn't impacted.
Well, if, if that's the case, then I would recommend we remove the curb cut in the pad out front, because right now it's an illegal parking space in the front yard.
Isn't it an existing, non-conforming curb cut?
Could be considered that, could be considered a parking space in the front yard. Just because the curb cut's there doesn't mean that you have the right to drive into it.
If I'm not wrong, if the gate was open, they'd be parking in their driveway, right?
But there is no driveway there, unless they drive on the yard to get to the rear.
Just for the record, there was a mention of a parking condition as a possibility in the papers, and that's why I asked about it. But if parking's not impacted, I, I'm hesitant to try to address it in anything we do tonight.
I agree.
Was the portion of the driveway that's missing there or not there when you guys purchased the property?
No, it's just the sidewalk and the little pad of cement right there in the grass. That's what, that's how we bought it. We haven't taken anything out, we haven't really put anything in there. We were just told that's on your side, so you guys can park on it, not everyone else. There's like a little box cement thing that kind of prevents you from going to the backyard, so you can't even put your car inside the house. I guess that's the driveway you guys were mentioning, because there is like just a random big block of cement right there.
In the backyard, you mean?
It's on the side of the house, which would lead to the back. So, now that you guys mentioned it, now it makes sense why it's there. Honestly, I never knew, I just wonder why, why it's right there.
I don't, I'm done with questions for the applicant.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I guess to sort of, there, there are a lot of things about this that are not pretty and go against a lot of things that I normally fight against, such as driveways that lead to nowhere, et cetera, et cetera. But I'm also troubled by forcing what is now amounting to very, very expensive changes in a long-term existing, non-conforming condition.
But it's non-conforming and also, it's, it's not just a, a non-conforming condition that you could say, oh, well, that's the way it was built at the time. Obviously, someone converted a unit into...
No, and that's why...
An extra dwelling unit.
Agreed, agreed, and that's why I'm sort of struggling. I think the, in terms of the interior of the structure, the thing that, the thing that resonates with me is the fact that it is all one family using it. And that the only aspect that makes it non-conforming is the kitchen. And I am, but I'm also not interested in making this a forever variance sort of situation either. But as long as it's family using it, I'm not opposed to the kitchen hanging out for however many years that it's their family using it. But having caveats that it would have to be removed before it was sold and transferred.
Um, what kind of, I guess this is a question for staff. What kind of, what's the range in what's a full kitchen and what's...
A wet bar?
A wet bar in the basement? With the ability to make light appetizers.
Staff requires the stove to be removed and capped off within the wall, and that the sink be removed.
So, why to get, why do people get to have wet bars in their basement?
Technically, they don't.
That's a little glitch in the zoning, don't you think?
Okay. I guess for the sake of moving forward, we're going to have to run through the standards. I have a feeling we're going to have opinions from all over the place. For the sake of simplifying it, um... For anyone who thinks, is there anyone who thinks long-term that it should be allowed forever? Can we just take that, is that off the table?
Yes, and I also think, I, I agree with that it's not, that it, that it shouldn't continue forever. And I also think we can remedy it, that we can grant a variance and remedy it with a, with the kind of covenant that the, that the staff and Spark Committee have recommended.
Okay, so full variance is in turn, full variance is off the table, like forever full variance? Okay, I just want to make sure that we're narrowing this down. So, then, for sake of argument at this point, without getting into the details of how it would happen, let's just say that there's denial, and there's an option that we're considering where staff uses legal mechanisms to make it such that it cannot be transferred as a three-unit dwelling.
What about inheritance? I'm only in favor of this if it's the de Soto's to, or the Soto's to use forever, even if it's their kids, their grandkids, whoever. If they keep the house, they get three units, period. That's the only way I'm voting yes on that.
It seems to me that the covenant we can fashion can deal with the rentability of the quote-unquote "third unit" without making a statement about whose family uses it, et cetera. In other words, if it continues to be used going forward as a two-family unit, then I don't have a problem with the state of the property as it exists.
I mean, I think you could deal with the inheritance also by dealing with, with making it a sale, if it's a sale versus a transfer of property.
That's true too.
So, if it's sold, it would have to be conforming, but if it's transferred?
If it's, if it's transferred and it is the Soto family.
To me, I think what they're, what we should be trying to avoid is a situation where someone buys the property or uses it in a way where they rent three units. That's what the ordinance is meant to prevent against. So, I think we can fashion relief that addresses that while allowing the Soto family to stay as it is.
Okay.
Okay.
So, keeping those, the version with those conditions in place and the version of, of denial in place, we shall move forward then and go through the standards. In this case, the zoning board is a determining body. And in this, the relief requested here is a major variance. So, starting with the standard for a major variance, the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use enjoyment or property values of adjoining properties. As has been indicated by the neighbors, this property has had three, been used as three units for a considerable length of time. And the current use by the Soto family appears to be complementary to the neighborhood itself. So, therefore, I believe this standard has been met.
I agree.
I agree.
Agree.
Step number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. This certainly rides on the line of this, rides on the line of this statement, but I do not believe it is the intent of the zoning ordinance to create such a retroactive, such a retroactive effect. And therefore, given the conditions, I believe this standard has been met.
Did you say, given the, the conditions that we look to impose, that it would be met?
The standard has been met, yeah.
I agree.
Step number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. I, I don't know that, I don't know how this relates too very well to the other properties in the area. However, I have not seen a case exactly like this in my tenure on the board. And certainly, the length of, of, length of time of nonconformance makes it unusual in that aspect as well. So, I believe this standard has been met.
I agree.
Agreed.
I happen to disagree on this. I think that the, the hardship is specifically related to the family, which I understand and empathize with. I think that they, it's unfortunate that they were given wrong information. And I think that there were professionals in place who had the opportunity or the duty, in fact, to tell them about actual facts. So, for me, I don't find that it meets that requirement.
Thank you.
I would have to agree with Mary Beth, that I don't think there's anything particular in the property that creates the, the hardship. It's more so the situation around the sale of the property.
Thank you. Step number four, the property owner would suffer a particular...
I just, for purposes of devil's advocate, think that the size of the parcel related to the size of the building and the way it's divided is peculiar to the property. It's a high-density area, as staff has found, and it's a high-density property.
But it also has been given legal, non-conforming status because of the size of the parcel and the, and the building on it. And if, if there were not a third unit in the building, I don't know that it would be being addressed at all as being a peculiar building.
Standard number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. As has been indicated, this property has existed as, existed in use as a three-unit building for a considerable amount of time. And it has been used by the property owner as such. And given the fact that its main use is to hold an entire family together, the potential hardship by, the potential hardship imposed by not being able to have that family stay together in the home is certainly a particular hardship. And therefore, I believe, considering the conditions that we have discussed putting in place, that this standard is met.
I agree.
I agree.
Standard number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property. I believe this standard is certainly met, given our conditions. The owner would not be able to sell the property as a three-unit property, even though they may have believed they bought the property that way. And also would require additional work at a cost to retrofit the home. So I certainly believe this standard has been met as well.
I agree.
Standard number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. As per my previous statements, the conditions of the kitchen, driveway, and et cetera aspects of the home, window in the basement, et cetera, are all items that were existing in their current condition when the owner, current owner bought the property and therefore have not been created by any person having interest in the property at this time. So I believe this standard has been met.
I agree.
I agree.
Standard number seven, the requested variation is limited to the minimum change necessary to alleviate the particular hardship or practical difficulty which affects the property. Per some of the discussion, there is, there has been considerable thought put into a scenario to provide, provide the specific relief needed in this situation without allowing long-term continuance of the extreme nonconformance. Therefore, I believe that as per the conditions, this is the minimum change necessary. So I believe that standard has been met.
I agree.
I agree.
Agreed.
Having run through the standards, I suggest that we make a positive motion and then vote as, vote as we see fit. If we look at the standards that staff provided, is there discussion on that before we move to a motion?
I just think that in addition to the removal of the kitchen at some future date, it should also be the removal of that third electric meter and the third gas meter.
One thing I'd add about the electric meters, I know a lot of times that third meter is also tied into the common areas of the building. So it may not be as simple as just removing that meter to that unit. It may be tied into other areas of the building.
There's a way for them to link it, to link it without having an effect.
What do we feel about the driveway?
I don't, I personally don't think we should be addressing it. It's not an issue tonight. I think if the city makes it an issue at some future point, we'll listen to that case.
Are we going to request that the window be taken care of?
Yes.
Immediately, though?
Yes.
So, so the proper egress window, installation of a proper egress window in a reasonable amount of time? Use of the basement dwelling unit restricted to members of the property owner's family?
I actually wouldn't put it that way. Because I think that encourages somebody to buy the unit and then live in the basement and rent the upper two units. I would just, what I'd recommend we condition is that the applicant work with city staff to draft and enter a covenant that addresses the sale, the saleability of the property as two units or fewer. And the removal of the third unit upon sale or before sale. Or the removal of the kitchen and the third unit before sale.
That leaves open the consideration, though, of the current owners only using one of the units and renting out the other two.
Sorry, I would also impose the condition that they, that this family be entitled, and this only this family be entitled to use, the three, the building has three units or otherwise need to remove one of the units.
Okay. And we're not doing driveway. You, it sounds like you've got the covenant thing, okay. Any other restrictions or conditions other than those discussed? Is there a motion regarding this request?
I'm happy to try, but I think your notes probably may be better than mine on the standards we just ran through from the recommendations.
I mean, basically, you just crossed out number four, right?
Okay, I'll give it a shot.
I have faith in you.
Okay. In the matter of thirteen ZMJV dash zero 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 eight regarding eighteen twenty-six Lyons Street, I move that we approve the requested variance with the following conditions. One, that all life safety violations must be addressed within a reasonable time after the variance is granted, including the addition of a proper egress window in the basement dwelling unit. Two, that use of the property as a three-unit dwelling be restricted to members of the Soto family only. And that if any other family, if there's any sale or attempt to rent to another family, that they be required to remove the third unit as a precondition. Three, that the basement dwelling unit must be removed when the property, prior to the property being sold or as a condition of sale. And four, that the applicant work with city staff to draft and enter a covenant reflecting the restrictions on sale as a three-dwelling unit as discussed on the record tonight.
Gas and electric?
Just a, okay, so friendly amendment to clarify that the term "removal of the basement dwelling unit" would refer to removal of the kitchen and removal of the third gas and water, gas and electric meters.
Right. I told you your notes were better than mine.
A question of clarification. On the, the segment that you talked about the Soto family being able to maintain it as a three-unit, is that with only members of the Soto family living in it? Or is that as they are able to maintain it as a three?
No, I'm sorry, what I implied was with only the Soto family living in it.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify on that.
Okay, I think we've, we've got a motion, that's been amended and accepted as such. So is there a second?
A second.
Here's a motion that's been made, and second, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Mary.
Aye.
And the motion is carried four to two. You will obviously need to work with city staff as the technicalities of this get developed. But you should still be able to maintain there as a family, so, okay? Thank you. All right, moving on to our next case, we'll be hearing about twelve oh two Sherman Avenue.
Before staff reads that into the record, I'd like to, as a, I'd like to note that I own property within five hundred feet of twelve oh two Sherman. But I do not think that it changes my, it affects my ability to fairly evaluate their request.
Thank you. It's noted, and I agree. Melissa?
Central Regarathanam, property owner, applies for major zoning relief to add one open parking space in the street side yard. The applicant requests open parking in the street side yard where parking is prohibited. Zoning code section six sixteen two one C one. A zero-foot street side yard setback where fifteen feet is required. Zoning code section six eight four seven A two. A one-point-five-foot rear yard setback where three feet is required. Zoning code section six eight four seven C four. And a parking stall length of thirteen-point-five feet where eighteen feet is required. Zoning code section six sixteen two four. The zoning board of appeals makes a recommendation to city council, the determining body for this case. Submitted as documents on record for this case is the variance application submitted January twenty-ninth, two thousand thirteen. Applicant's statement, applicant's submitted neighborhood photographs, standards form, updated zoning analysis, plan of survey dated January second, two thousand three, site plan, images of proposed parking area, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, image of property, and Spark meeting minutes from March sixth, two thousand thirteen, and February twentieth, two thousand thirteen. And if I could note that what was just read into the record was based on the original plan, and that is what was published in the newspaper and sent out to neighbors. Since then, the applicant has revised his plan and is now requesting only two aspects of zoning relief. With the new plan, the proposal would be requesting a three-foot street side yard setback where fifteen feet is required and to allow parking in the street side yard where it is not required, not allowed.
In other words, the new plan is compliant with the other two factors that we're previously requesting relief?
Correct, the rear yard setback is now compliant and the parking stall length is now compliant. And the setback from the street side yard is now larger than the previous zero-foot request.
Doesn't seem so.
Oh, I haven't gotten that, I just hadn't gotten that far.
She's here.
Okay, if I could have, if I could swear in now everyone who thinks they would wish to speak to us on this matter? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings? And if I could have you come up and state your name and address, please?
Hi, my name is Emily Ellis. I'm the property owner at twelve oh two Sherman Avenue. We purchased our first home at twelve oh two Sherman Avenue in two thousand eight. We have lived there for five years now. We really like the unique character of the house and also the diversity of this neighborhood within Evanston. We moved from Chicago and we did not own a car at the time that we purchased the house. Since this was our first home purchase, we didn't consider off-street parking at the time. The home that we purchased was a foreclosure and it was vacant for two years before we bought it. We spent the last five years improving the property, improving the property both inside and out to restore it to its original charm within the neighborhood. Our family has grown within the last five years and we now have three children. Two of our children are currently attending preschool. After our children started school, we purchased a car and we quickly realized how difficult it is to find on-street parking within our neighborhood. As you know, our property is located just one block from the Dumpster Street CTA station and also the Dumpster Street Business District. After dropping our children off at school at nine AM, parking spaces near our home have already been occupied by commuters. And each time we move our car during the day, we typically spend ten to fifteen minutes trying to find a parking space within our neighborhood. And we typically have to park at least two to three blocks away from our house and walk back home. This has been a hardship for us for two years and we want to improve the situation. And I'd like to address each of the seven criteria for the major variance. So our request today is for major zoning relief to add one off-street parking space in our side yard on Crane Street. We plan to remove a large portion of the existing deck to accommodate a twenty-one-foot by nine-foot parking space. The parking space will be an open parking pad with a matching apron. We will update the existing concrete with a stamped brick pattern to maintain the character of the neighborhood. To address safety concerns, we also plan to remove a six-foot panel of our rear fence. Our neighbor has also agreed to remove the shrubs that may be blocking sightlines. I'd also like to note that our car is equipped with a backup camera and alarm system so we can see any obstructions present on the sidewalk when backing up. So first, on the first criteria, to our knowledge, there will be no adverse impact on adjoining properties. On-street parking will be reduced by just one space with our proposal. We've discussed our plans in detail with our neighbor adjacent to us at eight oh nine Crane Street. And the parking space we are proposing would be at the rear of our property, adjacent to our rear property line. Our neighbor approves of our proposal and she has submitted a signed statement that's included in today's meeting packet stating that she does not have any objections to the proposal. Also, since we're adding off-street parking to our property for the first time and improving the aesthetic appearance of our rear and side yards, this should have a positive impact on the value of neighboring homes. We feel that our proposal keeps with the intent of the zoning ordinance. In the current code, single-family homes are typically entitled to two off-street parking spaces and we are only requesting zoning relief for one off-street parking space. In our proposal, we have exceeded the minimum length and width requirements for an off-street parking space. Also, given our irregular lot size, we have minimized the number of variances requested as much as possible. Our hardship is unique to our property because our lot was subdivided many years ago between our home and our rear neighbor's home. This resulted in a non-standard lot size of thirty-five hundred square feet. We do not have alley access, so we cannot construct off-street parking in a rear yard that would be in compliance with the current zoning regulations. Neighboring properties on our block do not face this issue because they have alley access and garages constructed for off-street parking. We have also noted in the meeting packet that eleven other properties within one block of our home have similar curb cuts for front yard or side yard off-street parking to accommodate the unique mix of parking situations within our neighborhood. Due to the nature of our property, if zoning regulations were strictly carried out, we would not be able to construct any off-street parking on our lot. The side yard setback variance and side yard parking variance are the only options for us to have off-street parking of any kind on our property. As stated before, not having off-street parking negatively affects both the practical use and also the value of our property. This proposal is strictly to alleviate our hardship with parking. We have no intention to use this to extract any additional income from the property. The hardship that I've presented to you today has not been created by ourselves. Off-street parking is definitely an important benefit that most homeowners enjoy. This benefit is particularly crucial in residential neighborhoods such as ours that are adjacent to public transit and also business districts. This hardship is truly due to the irregular nature of our lot that our property is situated on. Not having off-street parking definitely attracts, detracts from our enjoyment and our use of our property. The proposal I presented today incorporates the minimum changes necessary to our property to alleviate our parking hardship. It will improve both the value of our home and also the character of the neighborhood. I hope you'll consider granting zoning relief to our family so that we can continue to enjoy our home for many years to come. Thank you for your time and consideration today.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant at this time? Was there anyone else from the public who wish to speak to us on this matter? Seeing none, I think, obviously, there's nothing for you to respond to. So I think that we'll just get into consideration here and then if there's any further questions, we can get there. Thoughts from the board?
Yeah, I, just having property in the area and having been at the property for every day for the last eleven months, I disagree with the- I disagree with the, the description of the parking in the neighborhood. There has, there's, there's parking that's generally available, particularly just south of the property. I will admit that on the street sweeping days, when you can only park on one side of the street, it's a nightmare to find parking, but that's not unique to the neighborhood. That being said, there is property in the neighborhood that has been recently developed where front yard parking has been granted. Specifically at eleven thirty Sherman and eleven thirty-four, maybe thirty-six.
Under, under who?
Uh, I can't say. My understanding is that it's, my understanding that it's been developed in the last five years, five-ish years, anyway.
Not in here.
Maybe it's older than seven. I don't really know. So I'm torn because of those particular properties that have been granted that appear to have been given, let's put it that way, a front yard parking spot. So there seems to be some precedent, although it's, in my opinion, it's not incredibly necessary in the neighborhood.
Other thoughts?
Does the, does the rest of the neighborhood have alley parking where there's not front yard parking granted?
I'm looking at the map. A lot of it does, but there are.
Other than, yeah, other than there are.
Yes, most of the, most of the neighborhood is served by alley with garage spots.
There are other, there are other corner issues. I mean, this corner situation is.
It is a quirky corner and I will tell you Sherman is like the thoroughfare to get, to bypass Chicago Avenue.
Yeah.
It is a screaming street.
There are, like, if you look one block over, you see the exact same scenario of.
Twelve hundred Elmwood?
Yeah, of the parcel behind being, being separated from the parcel in front and therefore, you know, probably has a similar, you know, a similar scenario. I mean, that's a fairly, three houses down. I, I know that there's the same scenario on my block of like, of a very small yard because of the corner lot and the good portion of the rear yard having been sold off for another house at some point in time. All right, well, we're very vocal here this evening. As you, many of you know, I'm very much, I'm kind of very much a stickler in terms of front and street side yard parking. I think that it's one of the key aspects in terms of preserving the, the nature of the neighborhoods that you get where you, you know, that, you know, is the kind of historical and character aspect of Evanston of not having legal parking spaces in the street, you know. I mean, yes, we do have the scenario of certain neighborhoods have front access, but it's still front access to a legal parking spot, so. And should, should there ever be something that forced them to not leave their car in that spot, there could be an ordinance that would require people to not leave their car parked in the front yard of, you know, portion of their driveway. That's, you know, a potential option. So I, I'm failing to see a scenario that makes this property unique enough from the many other similar properties that would, that would cause me to consider an exception to that.
Well, but in this neighborhood, doesn't it seem like this property is one of the few, if not only ones, that doesn't have alley access or already have a variation to park in the front?
Well, I don't know about the variation to park in the front issue.
Well, the other, the two properties that I mentioned do not have alley access.
Right.
Because the whole property was developed as condominium, so there's no access in and out.
I guess.
But I've certainly, sorry, but I've certainly never been a, I've, I'm, I, I don't know how any of them have officially finished in, I don't know how all of them have officially finished in council, but I certainly have never been a proponent of allowing that. And I don't, it's, it's somewhat unique for the neighborhood, but it's not unique in general by point of the fact that there's the same exact situation pretty much like probably one block over. So it's like, it's a fairly common situation actually in Evanston. It happens like almost every other block. At least in the, in the older areas.
I don't, really? I mean, I think there's, the corner lots, the corner, the corner lots are a problem.
This is a corner lot though, so it happens at a lot of the corner lots.
So I guess I get into a situation where I'm never going to give somebody a curb cut if they've got a way to park in their backyard. I think this happened, I remember this came up a few years back. But you do get into kind of a safety issue. You know, if you're trying to get little people back to a house and you're especially on a street that, as one of our members just said, is a thoroughfare for people trying to avoid traffic on Chicago. So there's people barreling up and down Sherman all the time.
Actually, if anything, that's one of the things that sort of makes me a little bit concerned about this specific situation is the people coming around that corner and not, you know, creating more of a back, you're basically, we'd be creating a back out situation because it can't, you know, there's no ability to pull out. So you're backing out onto essentially that intersection with people coming around that corner. You know?
I've lived on major streets. I'm going to assume once they, if they did have this built, they would end up actually backing into the driveway every night and pulling out forward, is how I've always done it. I don't see how we can't call it a hardship. Certainly think it would meet that standard. From my perspective, it would, I think it would also be unique. They are on a corner lot. Corner lots do have more restrictive zoning issues than lots in the middle, in the middle of the block and they do not have alley access. I mean, I do agree with you. Talk about keeping the character of the neighborhood though by not having side or front driveways, but I'm kind of torn with not allowing someone to have, someone to park their car, especially when they live in such a congested area.
My issue isn't with not allowing someone to have a driveway. It's allowing someone to have a parking pad in a side yard or a front yard. And that's a very different scenario for me. Obviously, if there's a driveway and you are using it as a means to get to somewhere else as opposed to literally being the place that you park your car every night. I mean, that's the issue I had with the last one where I don't think they should have been allowed to keep that curb cut because it creates a parking spot in the front yard.
But they've modified their plan so that they're going to be parking, you know, they're pulling all the way in and then they're basically at a line with the house.
But even somebody, we've had a case come before us before where the person was parking twenty-seven feet from the front property line, but the driveway literally ended at the house. It did not go to a garage in the back and that was considered, it's considered a parking pad. And this board, I believe, voted against that, although I believe council overwrote our decision, or didn't override us, I mean, we recommended to them, but they, they went a different route than what we had recommended.
I'm wondering how I voted on that, guys.
I don't know if you were on the board yet. It may have been.
Yes, she was.
Was she?
Yeah, because I wish she was.
We've had, we've had several parking cases similar to that. I mean, I, I guess, I, I really hate to talk about precedent because I think it's an ugly thing, but I just feel very strongly that this is not, it is not a very unique condition. And it's something that, it's something that I think, you know, it's been a fight to sort of work against because of it just sort of happening and not, and not getting noticed at some points too. And it definitely concerns me that, that this door would really get opened at all.
I, I just want to hypothesize that the real solution to this is some sort of parking regulation on that street that prohibits the sort of commuter parking that happens there.
Permit the street, you mean?
Yes, because there's, there's the same issue further down on Sherman, the closer you get to Main. So it's sort of this issue that's all the way along these, these transit corridors. And it, it places a burden on the neighborhood, but I'm not sure that the way to solve it is to allow everybody to pave their front and side yard. But the solution is probably more in permitting the block.
Okay. Where are the commuters going to park if you permit the block?
In a parking lot where they have to pay?
What parking lot is that on Dempster at the L? I mean, it just, you know what, I'm, I'm not, I'm not harassing you right now. I'm just saying we're.
You can drive to Howard. We have a lovely one at the Howard stop. It's actually in Chicago.
They can ride their bikes, you know what I mean?
It's in Chicago, so we aren't getting the tax money for it, but there's a, there's a very large parking garage at Howard.
I kind of sense that we're going to split a little bit on this one. My concerns about this, actually, I, I do think that there's a hardship that's unique, but I guess the thing that I have reservations about is that the condition existed when the family bought the house and the family bought the house knowing it didn't have parking and that's reflected in the value of the house. So I don't think we should, I'm, I'm concerned about creating a precedent where people buy property in a condition and then decide that they're going to try to make efforts to change the condition of the property that they bought in a non-compliant way. That's, that's my biggest hangup.
All right. Is there anything further before we run through the standards? Okay. Standard number one, the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values of the adjoining properties. In this case, speaking to the, speaking to the character of the neighborhood and the impact that front or side street yard parking has on that, I do believe that it is a significant impact and therefore that the standard has not been met.
Disagree.
I disagree.
I disagree.
Standard number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. Per my previous statement, and for that reason, I believe that the standard has not been met.
I agree that it hasn't been met, but I think this is the one where I come out that it hasn't been met because the zoning ordinance doesn't intend for people to buy properties and then try to change them.
Standard number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. As for my comment during discussion, I, I do feel that this is a fairly common occurrence, particularly on corner lots throughout the historic areas of the city and therefore allowance of such would, would open the doors to, I can't imagine how many properties. So from that standpoint, I do not believe the standard has been met.
I, I disagree. I mean, I'm, it's hard to, the only thing you could do is run a little quick analysis, but I still think if you counted every corner lot that has this particular situation in Evanston, it would still come in as a very tiny percentage of the overall lots in Evanston. So I'm getting a little bit hung up on unique versus very unique versus extremely unique. I would still say that this is reasonably unique, so.
I would say, I would say that the majority of the people on the block don't have this situation impact on them. Then it's probably fairly unique.
I also think that because this particular corner lot was subdivided, it is peculiar to the property.
I would disagree. I think if you look, as, as Chairman Summers had said, that a large number of corner lots in Evanston and Skokie have had this situation where they sell off part of the property and there's very little property left for the person who actually is on the corner itself. And that's part of the character of having a corner lot is that you sacrifice some of that space in order to get two views where you don't have a neighbor out two sides of your property.
Standard number four, the property would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. I certainly understand the kind of hardship and difficulty that there can be in these areas to find parking. I do note, I remember Byrne's comment about pursuing, you know, alternative options. I, in fact, have, have done that at a previous residence in Evanston, so I do think that would certainly be recommended. So I believe, however, that, that this standard has been met, it certainly is a hardship that is related to, to the, to the choice of property. Standard number five, the purpose.
I'm sorry, wait, were you saying the standard is met or it's not?
Yeah, it is met.
Okay, I disagree. I don't think it is. I think it's an inconvenient, situation of inconvenience.
Standard number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property. While, while the applicant would be affecting the value of the property by adding an off-street parking space, it seems as though the family intends to stay on the property and that that is not the exclusive reason for trying to attain this variance. So I believe the standard has been met.
I agree.
Standard number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property.
I'd agree.
Yeah, sorry. I believe the standard has been met. Any, any level of hardship has not been created by the current owner. Standard number seven, the requested variation is limited to the minimum change necessary to alleviate the particular hardship or practical difficulty which affects the property. I, I believe certainly that the applicant has worked with staff to try to come to what is the minimum change necessary in spite of the other, the other standards. So I do believe that this standard has been met in terms of what would be the minimum change necessary to, to achieve their goals.
I agree.
Having run through the standards, is, are there any discussion on conditions before we move into a motion? If there's none, is there a motion regarding this case?
I would move in the matter thirteen Z M J V. Well, first off, wait a second here before I make a motion. Well, first off, wait a second here before I make a motion. We usually try to make motions in the affirmative.
If there's going to be affirmative votes.
If there's an affirmative. So I want to check with my fellow board members to see if there is an affirmative position on this.
So we're going to make an affirmative motion. She just.
Am I the only one putting my neck out here?
I, I would allow the variance if it were up to me.
Would you like to make the motion then?
Sure. I move that in Z E B A, oh, sorry. I move that in Z E B A case one three Z M J V dash zero 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 seven twelve oh two Sherman Avenue, that we recommend to the city council to allow, uh, a variance for, um, one open parking space in the street side yard.
Second vote.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Nay?
Nay.
Nay. The motion, uh, has been voted on, uh, with a four to, uh, sorry, two to four vote. So it will carry on, uh, to city council since we are not determining on this matter, uh, with, uh, general recommendation for denial. And we have a, how are you guys doing? Sure. All right, then, moving on to our next case, we have new business of sixteen twenty-two Forest Place to be read. Patriot Park LLC property owner applies for a special use for a bed and breakfast establishment at sixteen twenty-two Forest Place. Sixteen twenty-two Forest Place is located in the R1 single-family residential district, which requires a special use permit for a bed and breakfast establishment to operate. Zoning code section six eight two four. The zoning board of appeals makes a recommendation to city council, the determining body for this case. Submitted as documents on record for this case are the special use application submitted February fifth, two thousand thirteen, standards form, zoning analysis, bed and breakfast zoning regulations, plat of survey dated February twenty-second, two thousand twelve, site plan, elevations, letter of concern, aerial view of property, zoning map, image of property, and spark draft meeting minutes from March twenty-seventh, two thousand thirteen. Thank you. Okay, uh, I see we have a full audience then for this matter. At this time, if I could swear in, um, anyone who thinks that they would wish to speak with us on this matter, even if you're thinking about it, might as well get it over. Thank you. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings? Thank you. All right, and to start off, do we have representatives for the applicant?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Andrew Scott. I'm with the law offices of Dyke Magus at ten South Wacker Drive, Chicago, Illinois. I'm joined this evening by Dawn Overend, who is one of the owners of the applicant. In addition, Jeff Blau with Paul Janicki Architects, the project architects for the home, Mary Lindberger with Lindberger and Company. She'll testify as to impact on surrounding property values and also the cumulative effects of the proposed, uh, bed and breakfast establishment. Just to give you a brief recap of the subject property, uh, as was mentioned, the, the comment address is sixteen twenty-two Church Street. It's situated on a, it's a single-family home in the Lake Shore Historic District. It's about a twenty-two thousand four hundred and, uh, twenty-eight square foot lot. The home itself is estimated to be about, uh, twelve thousand square feet. It currently has eleven bedrooms, um, and there's also a coach house, uh, on the rear of the western portion of the property. There is a dwelling unit on the upper level of the coach house, and in addition, uh, there are six, uh, off-street parking spaces, seven if you count, uh, the outdoor parking space that's, uh, available on the property as well, uh, immediately adjacent to the coach house, and there's also, uh, sufficient driveway space in the western, to the west of the home, uh, between the single-family home and the coach house, uh, where cars have been parked previously by previous owners. Uh, as was mentioned in the application, the applicant is Patriot Park LLC. They are the owner of the subject property. The applicant proposes to restore and renovate the improvements on the property and then, uh, move into it once the, uh, I'm sorry, Ms. Overend will move into the home once the restoration is completed, and then she will operate a bed and breakfast establishment. Uh, we were before the preservation commission a number of times over the past several months and received a favorable unanimous recommendation from the preservation commission on March nineteenth. We were also before, uh, Spark on March twenty-seventh and also received a unanimous recommendation for the proposed special use. In terms of the sequence of the presentation, what I'd like to do first is I'll bring up, uh, Jeff Blau, who is the project architect. He'll talk about the scope of work that's going to be performed on the interior and the exterior of the home. In addition, after, uh, he speaks, I'll have Ms. Overend speak to the proposed operations of the bed and breakfast, and then finally Ms. Lindberger will talk about her analysis of impact on surrounding property values. I think for now, if it would be okay with the chair, I'd like to tender, uh, three exhibits for the record.
Sure, and I'm just going to touch base with you for one second here. You said known as sixteen twenty-two Church Street when you started?
I misspoke. Sixteen twenty-two Forest Place.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure that it was not known as a different address than it was technically. So, okay.
Now, my apologies for any confusion. The first exhibit that I would like to tender is, I'll mark as petitioner's exhibit A. That is the statement of qualifications for Mary Lindberger. Tender as petitioner's exhibit B are the qualification of Jeff Blau, the project architect. And then finally listed as petitioner's exhibit C is a, uh, valuation impact study performed by Lindberger and Company dated March thirty-first, two thousand thirteen. Approach the chair, would you like me to give it?
Yeah, please go ahead. And I'm going to run, oh, you've already got these labeled for me. Okay, fantastic. So we will, duly note that, uh, the statement from Lindberger is A, the statement from Mr. Blau is B, and the report, uh, from the appraisal and consulting services is C.
I should also note that the, uh, the valuation impact study has been placed on record with staff, so.
Okay, thank you.
It's all right, I'd like to call Mr. Blau up and, uh,
Please.
we'll talk through the improvements.
I'm actually gonna, I'm gonna have to get you on something else here.
Okay, Jeff, uh, if you could just state your name, company, and, uh, yeah, position with the company for the record?
Good evening. My name is Jeff Blau. I'm with Paul Janicki Architects in Evanston, and I'm a project architect there.
And how long have you been an architect?
Uh, about seventeen years now.
And your firm, Paul Janicki Architects, they've got extensive experience with historic renovation projects?
Yes, this is true.
And many, a, a number of those are, are in Evanston?
Quite a few in Evanston, yes.
Can you give me, give the board a couple of examples?
Um, sure. There's a few that have, uh, been, uh, we've been privileged enough to do quite a bit of work in Evanston, some of which have received, uh, preservation awards. Number on Judson Avenue, uh, twelve twelve, eleven thirty-eight, twelve twenty, uh, ten twenty-one Greenwood, and four nineteen Greenwood, which are all in the vicinity of this project.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, have you visited the subject property and the neighborhood around the subject property?
Yes, I have.
And you're familiar with the improvements on the subject property?
Yes.
If you could please describe the subject property and also the surrounding area for the board?
Certainly. Um, subject property, as Andrew described, R1, uh, district, um, it is also, falls within the Evanston Lake Shore Historic District. On the property is a three-story stucco, single-family home, uh, and also a two-story coach house in the rear. Surrounding neighborhoods, very similar in nature, uh, mostly predominantly single-family homes, um, to the north and south and west of the property. And, uh, as you move east from the property, you'll cross the Forest Place to Patriot Park, Sheridan Road, Dawes Park, and the lakefront beyond that.
Okay, thanks. And could you please, as I pull up, uh, some of the elevations, can you please describe, uh, the proposed exterior changes to the subject property?
Yes. Uh, so there's two major parts of the property, or, uh, of the project and the property itself. Obviously, the main house and the coach house. So the main house will undergo a complete restoration, um, and then the existing coach house will be replaced by a new coach house. The restoration will entail doors, windows, the half-temper construction, stucco, masonry, the tile roof, um, all beautiful materials that, uh, have gone by the wayside over the years, um, so are in need of a proper restoration. Some new, new parts to the exterior of the house. We're going to redo the driveway, which is currently, uh, just a concrete drive. So it would be, um, restored with, um, proper brick pavers, um, which would have been indicative of a house of this era. Uh, we will also add a new ramp access to the front of the house, um, which will take you up to the front, um, terrace here and then allow access to the side entry. Another part of the project is a new terrace, uh, on the southwest corner, uh, at the, towards the back of the house. And then, can't see on this plan, but, uh, on the site plan here is okay. We would be adding an elevator on the north side of the house. And, uh, also, uh, in the south yard, we would be regrading that, um, to create contours that allow for better light into the basement, um, and full-height windows. And, uh, and then obviously the new coach house at the back of the property. Uh, as for the interior, again, uh, major restoration of a lot of the existing finishes, and upgrading the structural system, uh, or any structural repairs, um, there's been obviously sagging over the years, so that will be upgraded, uh, to create as safe an environment as possible. Mechanical, electrical systems, communication systems will be upgraded, um, and then a new egress stair will be added, uh, which will go from the basement up to the fourth, or up to the third floor, so all four floors. Also, a, a new sprinkler system will be added throughout the house. Floor by floor, um, here you see the basement plan.
Why don't you talk very, just very quickly about the condition of the basement today? How it's basically unfinished, it's mainly dedicated to mechanicals in the building?
Yes.
And I'm going to actually stop you for two seconds because I don't think that we have all of the plans in our packet, which means that this is new information for us. So, um, we're going to either need to keep or make arrangements for copies of these as part of our record. Okay? Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, so, right, as Andrew was alluding to, the current basement, uh, very dank, um, typical, again, of a house of that era, uh, was only meant for service and mechanicals and storage. So low headroom, um, not much to speak of down there. So we will be digging down and underpinning, uh, to create a proper basement that could be utilized for today's needs. Um, so, uh, current program involves media room, exercise room, game room, uh, additional mechanical space and, um, storage, and then obviously the elevator will come down to this level and the new egress stair, which you can see here.
So there's no, um, there are no bedrooms
No bedrooms.
in the basement space?
That's correct. The, the bedrooms are going to be on the third and second floor, so as we move up, I mean, that, I don't know if I mentioned, there are currently eleven bedrooms, uh, in the home today, and what we're going to be doing is consolidating that down significantly.
Two.
We're ultimately going to have a total of six bedrooms.
Does that include the coach house?
Seven with the coach house.
Uh, sorry. You, you can ask, certainly get to questions.
I should mention that the coach house is a rental unit.
Uh, so here we have the first floor, um, and again, the changes would be, it would be adding the, uh, elevator here, uh, the second egress stair here, and then the new terrace off the back of the house here. The rest of it is pretty much a faithful restoration of the existing details and finishes. The kitchen will be updated with cabinetry and new appliances.
Actually, you know what? Can I have you toss the first floor in the basement up here just so we can? I can, we can give them back to you if you need to show us other stuff. I just, since it's pretty far away to try to look at a basement plan that hasn't been in the record yet.
Would you like just a moment to, to review, or would you like us to continue?
Uh, you can go on, we'll kind of pass around and pay, we're good at double paying attention.
Okay, so on the second floor, um, is where we will now have five bedrooms and five bathrooms. The existing conditions, there's six bedrooms. So as Andrew said, we are consolidating. So the current bedrooms are really just stellar, uh, pristine, the detail, so there's really no need to do much in terms of space planning and reconfiguring. Uh, so we're maintaining bedroom one, two, three, four, and five. And then, uh, which was the least desirable bedroom will now be converted into two bathrooms and a laundry room. Additional changes with the egress stair here, we displaced a bathroom, which will now be, uh, an en suite bathroom with bedroom one, and, um, some additional closet space will be added to bedrooms that didn't have adequate closet space.
There's also a library.
I'm sorry, there's, uh, existing library, which, uh, exists at a mid-level as you go from the first floor up to the second floor, and that's a space above the port-cochere as you come up the driveway. Uh, and then this is the, I'm sorry, the third floor, um, which, uh, its current conditions are, um, there are five bedrooms up there, um, five small bedrooms, I should say, uh, miscellaneous storage and closets and one bathroom. Um, so here, we're consolidating those rooms and doing some space planning to create one master bedroom suite on the third floor. And again, this will be served by the elevator and the, um, egress stair.
So is this the owner's suite?
It's the owner's suite. Yes, the master bedroom suite. And just while everybody's looking at a couple of their points, um, just to address some of the standards and the ordinance, the property is served by a city sewer and water?
Yes, it is.
And it's your opinion that the sewer- And it's your opinion that the sewer and water service is adequate for the intended use of the home?
Yes and no.
Okay, you want to talk about the answer as to why no?
No, with the sprinkler system and based on working, based on experience working in other older houses and upgrading the facilities, we typically would need and would plan for a two-inch water service line to replace what's in place.
So, okay, so upon completion of the two-inch main, then mainly to address the sprinkler of the home?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right. In regards to the sewer, that's the to-be-determined, more so than the water. We plan to work with Evanston Utilities Sewer and Water to make further determination on that.
Okay, but you have, in terms of life safety, you have been working closely with the City of Evanston Fire Department in terms of sprinkling the building and other life safety matters?
Yes, that's correct. Egress and fire safety.
Okay. You talked a little bit about, in terms of the exterior renovations, but can you talk just very briefly about how the proposed renovations preserve the historical resources of the subject property?
Yes, I can do that. Yeah, so the restoration and revitalization of this property would keep this house safe and relevant to the neighborhood and Evanston as a whole for many, many decades, hopefully into the next century. This house in particular was built in 1883 for Mr. Curtis Remmy, who was a prominent Evanstonian of the time. He served on the village board for a time, started the Evanston Club. Eventually, it was remodeled in the early 20th century by renowned architect Ernest Mayo. So ultimately, this is the type of history that this project will keep alive.
And based on your investigation of the home so far, there's been a fair amount of deterioration with respect to the foundation? And that there is indeed a significant amount of work that's necessary in order to shore up the foundation and allow this home to continue for, you know, another 100 years?
Correct, yes. Most, anytime you work on a house of this time period, you're gonna run into that with sediment and upgrading of systems is usually always required.
Okay, and we talked about this, but all the bedrooms for the bed and breakfast are gonna be located within the single-family home, not in the coach house, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And there are gonna be five bedrooms for guests?
Yes.
Okay, and there are no other bedrooms within the living quarters of the single-family home for patrons of the bed and breakfast?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And the only other bedroom is the master suite that we talked to, that we talked about? And that's gonna be where Ms. Overend's, you know, principal bedroom is?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. And we talked about where you're actually consolidating the upper, the third floor? And really, it's just a matter of, you know, renovating and restoring the bedrooms on the second floor, eliminating one to bring us down to a total of five bedrooms?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So with all of this renovation, there are no guest rooms that are being specifically constructed for the bed and breakfast, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And there are no cooking facilities in any of the guest bedrooms?
Correct.
No improvements that would increase the likelihood of fire?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And have you been asked to design any special signage for the project?
No.
Any special lighting for the project?
No special lighting. To, so far, the only lighting we've discussed is just historically accurate lighting that would be in line with other residential houses in the neighborhood.
And you've reviewed the comprehensive plan of the city in Evanston?
Yes, I have.
And it's your opinion that the proposed bed and breakfast establishment is consistent with the applicable purposes and policies of the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
If you could just speak briefly, as the basis for your opinion?
Yes, sure. With regard to the comprehensive plan, one of the main objectives is to maintain the appealing character of Evanston's neighborhoods while guiding their change. If I could just read one passage from the vision statement. "A commitment to quality design should be reflected in the architecture of new buildings as well as existing ones. Historic preservation should also continue as a commitment. When economically feasible for historic buildings in jeopardy of being lost, adaptive reuse, creating new uses in old structures should be encouraged." So, yes, I believe the vision statement is supporting bed and breakfast.
Okay, and you've reviewed the city zoning ordinance?
Yes, I have.
And it's your opinion that the proposed bed and breakfast is consistent with the applicable purposes and policies of the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, and is it your opinion that the bed and breakfast establishment would otherwise comply with all of the regulations of the R1 District?
Yes.
And you've also looked at Chapter 19, Title 8 of the city's code pertaining to licensing and standard for a bed and breakfast establishment?
Yes, I have.
And it's your opinion that the proposed bed and breakfast will comply with all of the fire safety requirements set forth in that code?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and you've reviewed the state's Bed and Breakfast Act as well?
I have.
And it's also your opinion that the bed and breakfast will comply with all applicable fire regulations set forth in that state statute?
Yes.
Okay. Can you talk a little bit about the landscaping that's proposed? Some of the natural resources in the property?
Yes, I can talk about that. So currently, again, this is in the very beginning stages of any talk of landscape design. We've recently engaged with a firm in Evanston Kettle Camp and Kettle Camp. So we were scheduled this week to meet with an arborist on site to determine the, there's several mature trees, three or four, on the site that we would like to analyze and protect throughout the construction phase. In terms of actual site design and landscape design, again, it's in its very early stages. So we'll have to work with the owner, Dawn, and Kettle Camp, Kettle Camp, and to come up with an interesting, engaging design. Something probably more manicured. Right now, it's a bit overgrown and uncontained, so lots of room for improvement there.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if you'd like to ask questions of Jeff now, or if you'd like us to get through everyone, how would you like to proceed?
Generally speaking, if we have questions, then we'll throw them out to Jeff, Mr. Brow, and at this time, and then we may still call him up. But are there any questions for the architect at the moment?
What's the estimated cost of the, carrying out the plan you've designed?
Again, it's pretty early. We're partially through, almost completely through schematic design. But the numbers that have been discussed have been between three and six million.
Was that a budget that was given to you at the beginning of the project?
No.
Was there any budget given to you at the beginning of the project?
Yes.
What was the budget?
I'm sorry, three million was the initial starting point.
And who was it that engaged you to come up with this plan or design?
It was Dawn.
Dawn?
Dawn Overend.
Who, is Dawn the owner of the property?
Yes.
Just to clarify for the record, the owner of the property is Patriot Park LLC, and Dawn is one of the owners of Patriot Park.
I didn't see in our packet the ownership information illustrating the ownership of the property. Did you provide that, and I missed it?
It should have been part of the application package, the disclosure.
It's normally in there, that's why I said I might have just missed it.
The question I have for you is, in the snack bar, I see a sink. Were you here for our discussions about an hour ago?
I was.
So, how do you respond to a sink actually meaning that there's a kitchen? And you now have two kitchens in a single-family dwelling?
If I could answer that question, I believe that staff said that the signs of a kitchen, or at least the way they read the policy, was a stove and a sink.
Is it and or or? It is taken into account with other factors as well, so it's looked at on an individual basis.
I can imagine you've done your research and you know this is a sticking point for us.
Fully aware of it.
Okay.
Because it looks like a kitchen.
It's sized like a kitchen.
It functions like a kitchen.
But there's no stove. No cooking facilities whatsoever.
Sorry, so just to get back to the ownership. I see on page six that Ms. Overend is a 2% owner in the LLC, and then the rest of the LLC is owned by the James N. Pritzker Revocable Trust. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
When was the property purchased by this LLC?
I believe that, well, the deeds in the package, in the application package, I believe.
March 15th, 2012, looks like.
So was the property purchased with the intent of converting it to a bed and breakfast?
I don't know the answer to that.
But the property was purchased in the LLC's name?
That is correct.
And a question for staff, given, given the previous discussions and scenarios before this board and council, there are no changes that we have, that we are not aware of regarding the definition of ownership as it relates to a bed and breakfast?
There are no changes. Law department has opined on the ownership meeting, the standard expressed in the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. There are any other questions for the architect at this time?
Just one. You gave an opinion that the modifications would be consistent with the, I think you said, the ordinance and also the city plan, or ma'am?
Comprehensive plan.
There's the comp plan, and then there's also the zoning ordinance itself.
Would, if the modifications were carried out, but the property was not converted to a bed and breakfast, the modifications would still be consistent with the plan, right?
Correct. If there are no further questions, Dawn, if you could come up, please?
Thank you.
If you could state your name for the record and also your relationship to the applicant?
My name is Dawn Overend. I'm a partner in the LLC, which is the applicant.
And as we discussed, you do have an ownership in the applicant?
I do. I actually, and to correct the record, I actually have a 4.9% ownership in it. Oh, and the budget also, I'll just correct both of these things. It's five and a half million dollars for the restoration.
And that, again, is sort of a preliminary basis, I think. Anybody who's done any kind of renovations, once you get into it, always add 20% more, I think, is the, is the rule of thumb, unfortunately, as I'm learning.
How much did the LLC purchase the property for?
$2.8 million.
Just, you know, again, for the record, the applicant owns the subject property and all the improvements on the subject property?
Yes.
Okay. And can you just explain very briefly, because there has been discussion about ownership? Why a limited liability company?
Well, for tax purposes, to protect our personal assets. And I think any legal licensed bed and breakfast owner would form an LLC. It's just good business practice and one of the first things they'll tell you when you go to the Illinois Bed and Breakfast Association meetings.
And upon completion of the renovations, you'll reside in the single-family home?
Yes.
And that'll be your principal place of residence?
Yes.
Okay, so this'll, this'll actually be your home?
Yes.
Okay. So you'll be, you know, we've got the master suite, but then you'll be using all of the areas, the basement, the, you know, the main floor, you know, when and when guests aren't there?
Yes.
And you'll have guests over, entertain friends?
Yes.
Okay. And friends and family will also come visit you?
Yes.
Okay. So, just to, again, to clarify, you are an owner of the bed and breakfast establishment, and you are gonna occupy the single-family home in which it's located?
Yes.
Okay. You're not only the owner, but you're also gonna operate the bed and breakfast?
Yes.
Okay. Talk about a little bit your experience in terms of?
Can I just interrupt the patter for a minute? Did you own the property before the LLC purchased it?
No.
Okay, thanks.
Do you want to talk about sort of your experience, just in terms of to be able to operate a bed and breakfast?
Sure. I joined the Illinois Bed and Breakfast Association three years ago. I attend their meetings, seminars, conferences. I've met with about 24 owners of bed and breakfast establishments. I've interviewed some of them at length, others I meet with socially so that I can find out the ins and outs of running a bed and breakfast as an operation. I've done the reading on materials that they provide for us, met with vendors who commonly provide supplies for bed and breakfast associations. Let's see, I've had food industry experience, both in the front and back of the house. I worked for the president of the National Restaurant Association. I've also had experience both planning and executing service of food to large groups of people, that being the Illinois Department of Children and Family Services. I also volunteered at the USO at Great Lakes for one year, one night a week. And just one staff person and I prepared dinner and served dinner to hundreds of people every week. We then cleaned the entire place, inside and out. Freezers, refrigerators, stoves, ovens, microwaves, specialty food machines that we disassembled, cleaned and then reassembled all the counters, hand-washed every huge pot, all the utensils. So I am used to, in terms of food service, serving lots of people.
And also, it sounds like food sanitation standards?
Yes.
Sorry, just follow up to my other question. I know it's not in with this, but did you, do you currently live in the, on the property?
No, it's undergoing restoration.
Where do you currently live?
I live at 1930 Ridge Avenue in Evanston.
Have you ever lived on the property?
I have not. I was living behind, in a house behind the property. And we could see that that house had been on the market for four years. And there was not, we had talked to the owner, there was not a single offer from a family, a couple, a single person, anyone. And we saw the maintenance that that house needed. We were hoping that we could restore it to its former magnificence. But obviously, it would need some use. There was no family who could afford that. And so that was something we wanted to do.
When you say "we," who are you referring to?
My partner in the LLC.
Who is that?
That's Colonel Pritzker.
Okay. And so, just, the other gentleman wasn't able to answer my question, but as one of the partners who purchased the property, was the property purchased with the intent of restoring it and converting it to a bed and breakfast?
Originally, that was our purpose. We actually wanted to buy two. And we invited every neighbor within 500 feet and presented the fact that we wanted to purchase two, which were in the same position. They had both been on the market for years with no offers and were in need of maintenance. And then, after we bought the Forest Place, we had not decided for sure if we were going to make it a bed and breakfast, but then we did decide we would do that.
So at the time you purchased the, this property, 1622 Forest, the plan was to convert it to a bed and breakfast and to have you move in as the slash owner-manager?
Either that or possibly to move into it without using it as a bed and breakfast, so.
Your partner was plan, was, your partner was going to buy the property, 95.5% of the property and have for you as a home? Without converting it?
Well, I don't want to get into personal discussion, which I don't think is relevant here. There was discussion about having it as a personal home or as a bed and breakfast.
I think it is relevant, actually, because I think it's relevant to the question of whether or not it's owner-occupied. So, and that's just my reading of the municipal code. But I am curious what the arrangement was supposed to be then, if it wasn't gonna be converted to a bed and breakfast?
Then it would be that I would live there.
On what type of plan for you to pay for the house?
Now, that I really think is beyond the scope of these standards.
I disagree.
Well, I think as staff did note, your own Corporation Council has opined that the ownership structure of Patriot Park LLC meets the definition of owner-occupied. In fact, I think it was in July- In fact, I think it was in July of last year, several amendments were put up to the City Council in an attempt to modify how ownership is, you know, required for a bed and breakfast. That was voted down five to two. I think that, you know, between the two of those, I, you're entitled to your opinion. I can only express to the board what your own Corporation Council has opined after extensive research and what the will of the City Council was in terms of changing those standards. In terms of Ms. Overend's arrangements, I'm not sure that it even advanced far enough to determine ultimately under what circumstances she would occupy the home. She had an ownership interest in the LLC when the property was purchased and so perhaps that was sufficient, perhaps it was not.
That's what I'm trying to find out. That's why I'm asking the questions.
You're trying to determine, I'm sorry, I'm-
I'm trying to determine whether or not an LLC owns the home or whether Ms. Overend owns the home.
And you look at legal title, an LLC owns the home.
Okay.
And the owners of the LLC are Ms. Overend and a trust. And the trust is wholly owned, the sole beneficiary is Colonel Pritzker.
Do you have any kind of relationship with Colonel Pritzker other than as a business partner? In other words, are you related in any way?
No.
Okay. I, I think that answers my question.
Very slightly, since it's somewhat related, I'm just going to cover, um, to clarify ownership, I believe, if I recall correctly, that Ms. Overend was preferred as one of the owners in the, um, submittal that we had for Church Street. There were-
That was, uh, that wasn't Overend, but that was her sister.
Actually, we had each of the sisters, only 1% was how it was initially presented to us.
So I'm, anyway, so she was preferred as, as representative, as a representative owner and potential player in, in the, in the running of that establishment. And so I'm just wanting to, um, wanting to understand if she is taking part in the running of that establishment or if she has, is not, is not part of that, that ownership.
Uh, she, she holds an ownership interest in that, in the, I'm sorry, Evergreen Manor LLC, but I don't think there was ever any testimony that she would be operating the bed and breakfast at 300 Church Street.
So, Ms. Overend, you are not acting in the operation of the bed and breakfast at 300 Church Street at all?
Yeah, that's correct.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Overend at this time?
Would you like us to address the, if there, I mean, she can address the operations if you're interested?
Yeah, sorry, I wasn't sure. I get lo, I got lost here for a second. Were you done with your questions as well?
Uh, do you want to just talk about, you know, we've talked about it's going to be five rooms are available, how you're going to handle reservations, checkout times?
Sure. It will be five rooms, five guest rooms, each with a private bath. Reservations will be made through a web reservation system that's commonly used by bed and breakfasts and guests will also be able to call the bed and breakfast directly to make reservations. Checkout time will be three, I'm sorry, check-in time will be three, checkout time will be 11. I will be serving only breakfast. That's all that's allowed by ordinance. In terms of a housekeeping service, the plan is to have someone come in on a daily basis. That person will not be arriving in a van. That person will probably be dropped off. Parking is all on-site. There are questions about loading. I have, I mean, other than FedEx or UPS possibly delivering a package, I don't plan to have anything like that. All linen service will be on-site also, so there won't be anyone arriving to do that. I have a person who does my grocery shopping in a small car. I can add on the items that will be needed for breakfast for any guests, so there will not be any van pulling up with food products either.
And your rates are going to be somewhere between $150 to $300?
Yes.
Okay. And then just in terms of security, I think you had mentioned that it's going to be key cards to, to enter the home and then each of the rooms is going to have its own keyed entry. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And you're, you're working with the Evanston business community?
Um, yes, we will be. I, first of all, we, wherever a project is located, and in this case it's Evanston, we try to retain Evanston residents and businesses to do the work. So we have already retained many to work on the restoration of the project as well as on the interior furnishings. In terms of engaging the business community, we will be happy to list any business which would like to be listed so that our guests are able to use those businesses. We'll certainly refer people to Evanston businesses, restaurants, and shops.
Okay, and I'm just, I'm going to skip around it a little bit here. You're not proposing to establish any signage other than perhaps an address identifier?
There will be no sign. I, I mean, there will be the numbers on, on the house so that, obviously, but no sign indicating that it is a bed and breakfast, no.
Okay. And you're going to, you're going to comply with all the revenue collection and remittance requirements of the city of Evanston?
Yes.
You're going to obtain all the necessary business licenses and comply with all of applicable city rules, codes, and ordinances?
Yes.
Okay. And you've also reviewed the State's Bed and Breakfast Act and it's your intent to comply in all respects with that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And I, I had one other thing to say, because this is something that's been brought up a lot, and that is I am not having amplified music on the property. I live there. It's my house. I'm, I'm not having, I've heard about all these huge events that people are saying are going to be there. There aren't. I, I mean, my goal is to try and fill these five rooms. There may be a very few small events because I have to comply with Evanston statutes in terms of even how many I can have in a year, but I can guarantee you, there's not going to be loud music or amplified, God, amplified music. You know, it's my house, so I'll just go with that.
And I had the opportunity, actually, to talk with the previous owner who had six children and apparently that's going to be a huge improvement over the six kids and the midnight basketball games that I heard about. So, thank you.
Okay. Well, I don't know, did you have any more questions?
I just have one quick question. So, wait, you talked about like $2.8 million to buy the property and then $5.5 million to renovate it. As a business proposition at $300 a night, that's a long payback time.
Yeah. It's more of a land banking investment. And the other, the other thing I will say is-
Sorry, would you mind saying that, that sentence again?
Yeah, in terms of investment, I would look at it as more of a land banking investment as opposed to getting a return on investment immediately. It's obvious that we won't with that kind of capital improvement.
So, so what's, so what's the end intention for this piece of property? Is to be able to sell it in several years to?
Well, certainly I would hope not in several years, although we would certainly consider and would have at any point if a family comes forward and, and can pay, we would definitely consider an offer from a family, certainly. You know, anyone would like to see a family in these houses. If there's a family that can afford it, that's a good use for a property. But if not, we're intending to have a bed and breakfast there.
And I think one of the things that you heard before is that, you know, Dawn doesn't live there anymore. The house, it's a single-family home. It, it, you know, there's nothing special about it in terms of the changes that are being made on the interior that such that a family or, you know, whoever wants to live in that large of a home can't just move right in there. There's nothing particularized that sort of, it's not at a point of no return in terms of use.
Who's, what's the plan? I'm, I'm sorry, I probably missed it in earlier testimony, but the coach house, I, I see that it's going to be, you know, still have living quarters. Is that going to be maintained as a rental property or?
Yes.
Okay.
The current tenant intends to stay there.
After the house is rebuilt? It's nice for them?
But yes, we have taken plans to make sure that it could be resold as a single-family home if there's a family that can afford it, certainly.
From a staff standpoint, actually now that you mention it, is there, I'm trying to, as I'm listening to the conversation, I'm also trying to understand a little bit more about the consideration of the special use versus the proposed construction. For instance, the, I know that the limitations on accessory structures have become much more significant since a lot of these original two-story coach houses were built. So, are we, are we fully compliant there and therefore it's not an issue? And similarly, it seems to me that the removal of the coach house and driveway and the replacement of a coach house on an alley constitute new construction, which the city requires you to have access from the alley only to those parking spaces. So where do those considerations come into play versus the special use that we're looking at?
As for the rental of the coach house, because this is a replacement of a coach house that existed prior to the 1993 zoning ordinance, it will be allowed to continue as a rental. As for any of the other changes, the, the driveway-
Even it's, but it, isn't there like a limitation on height now for accessory structures? That's much more severe than it used to be?
Actually, Lori, I think I can answer that. When we went through preservation, they did look at height and we actually lowered it from our original plan and-
Yeah, I just thought there was a zoning requirement for accessory structures.
The coach house has been analyzed by the zoning staff and it does meet all of the requirements.
Okay.
And we're not enlarging the footprint either, if that helps at all.
But we're moving it. I mean, I don't consider this a replacement structure. It's not in the same spot. It's not, it's not a replacement structure. It's not like you have a little two-story garage and you-
Correct.
Replace it on the same spot, the same pad, same size.
As for the placement, it needs to meet the current zoning requirements, which it does, but as for the use, it, it's considered to be a continuation of an existing use.
I have another question from Ms. Overend.
What, sorry, but what about like the, what about the creation of a new parking structure on an alley and allowing the new drive, you know, a new driveway to be built to it?
I'm not sure I understand that.
You can't, you can't just, you can't build a garage at the back of a property that has alley access and do a, and, and maintain a front curb cut.
Because the curb cut is already at the front, they're, they're not increasing any kind of noncompliance. It's already existing.
Yeah, but if somebody rebuilds, if somebody does their garage at the back and allow, we've had previous instances where if somebody builds a garage at the back and has access from the back, then they're no longer compliant with their front access.
That was in case, the case we were referencing earlier was the one where the, the family had built a garage in the back and kept the garage, the, the driveway access from the front and it was required to have a variance. Because they intended to park in that part of the driveway. Since the driveway would still just be an accessway existing as it previously did, it would be allowed.
In that particular case, they were planning on removing part of the driveway.
Well, they were removing the entire driveway here. They've already stated that it's a concrete driveway that they're removing and replacing with pavers. So once that's gone...
I don't, I don't understand your point.
But, but in that case, they were not planning on replacing the driveway. They were removing a portion of the driveway and turning it back to grass. And therefore they would be left with a parking pad in the front yard.
Oh yeah, I remember that now.
Whereas this particular case, they still maintain the integrity of a drive-through.
There was one that was a side yard parking space as well. There was a separate case too where there was a side yard parking space that they were trying to get created to keep the front, but, I don't know. I, I guess I, I feel like this is related, but we won't continue that argument for right now. So, going on.
Sorry, I had a few more questions. Does the LLC have a business plan for the property?
Yes.
Okay. And does the business plan analyze the point at which the venture will become profitable?
I'm not sure. I don't remember because we did it quite a while ago.
There's some period of time, given the initial investment and the $5.5 million or up to $5.5 million budget for renovating, that the LLC will operate at a loss?
Um, I think yes.
Okay. And are you being paid any salary by the LLC?
Not now, no. You mean, oh, when I, when the bed and breakfast opens?
Yes.
Yes.
And is that your only expected source of income until the LLC becomes profitable?
Uh, no, I have other sources of income.
Do you have another job?
I have another job now, which, once the bed and breakfast opens, that will be my full-time job.
Okay. Are you a member of any other LLCs with Colonel Pritzker?
Yes.
How many others?
I, I don't know. I'd have to look.
More than five? Do you, do any of the other, do any of the other LLCs that you and Colonel Pritzker co-owned together own other property in Evanston with plans for bed and breakfasts?
One does.
Where is that property?
300 Church Street.
Are there any others other than those two?
Not in Evanston, no.
In other area villages?
Cities.
Bed and breakfast.
Cities.
I don't have an interest.
Own properties?
No, I don't have an interest in another bed and breakfast, no.
Do you have an interest, do, do any of the LLCs of which you have an ownership interest have properties with plans for bed and breakfasts?
No.
Good for now. Okay.
That's it?
Mary, could you state your name and title for the record and also the name of your company?
My name is Mary Lindberger. I am a commercial real estate appraiser. I have the MAI designation from the Appraisal Institute and I own my own company. I reside in Evanston and I've lived here for 25 years. I live on Ridge Avenue, excuse me, Ridge Avenue.
Okay, and I've already tendered the resume as petitioner's Exhibit A, establishing your credentials and experience. You're familiar with the subject property and its improvements?
I am.
Okay, and you're familiar with the neighborhood surrounding the subject property?
I am.
Okay, and you're, you're familiar also with the proposed improvements to the subject property and the proposed operations of the proposed bed and breakfast?
Yes, I am.
And have you formed an opinion as to whether or not the proposed bed and breakfast will interfere with or diminish the value of properties in the neighborhood?
I have.
And if you could please state your opinion to that effect and also summarize the basis for that opinion?
I don't believe this is going to have any negative impact on surrounding properties in the immediate neighborhood or in the historic district where it's located. I know this has been a continuing concern on the, the part of, of neighbors in the area, but I have attempted to sort of look into other bed and breakfast operations and evaluate their impact on surrounding properties. I would note that I first started with Evanston. There is only one property that I would consider meeting, the zoning department's concept of a bed and breakfast, and that's a place called Janet's Place on Judson Avenue in the, in the 900 block. It's right near Lincoln School and it's just north of the Main Street Commercial District there that's east of Chicago Avenue. There are obviously some other sort of inn-type facilities in Evanston. There's the Margarita Inn on Oak Street and obviously very near the property that we're talking about tonight is the Homestead Inn on Hinman. Neither of them are bed and breakfasts as, as is understood under the zoning. They're both inns. I would say that I'm familiar with both of those properties. I don't think they've had any negative impact on their surrounding property values. I would say the same for Janet's Place. And one of the reasons that I did not focus intense study on Janet's Place is that the neighborhood surrounding Janet's Place, I think, is fairly distinguishable from the neighborhood surrounding the Forest Place property that we're talking about. Janet's Place is on a very, very nice street, but there's a substantial amount of multifamily development there as opposed to single-family development. It's not in an historic district. It's adjacent to a, a public school. It's a very nice location and a very nice property, but a different neighborhood, or a different type of neighborhood. And for that reason, in order to sort of see if I could gather some data on the interface of bed and breakfast and surrounding single-family homes, I looked down into the city of Chicago and Oak Park, looking for bed and breakfast oper- and Oak Park, looking for Bed and Breakfast operations that I could research. I found, actually, there were several Bed and Breakfasts in the city of Chicago, which is kind of surprising. I never thought of this as much of a Bed and Breakfast market, but indeed it is. These are kind of very low-profile properties and you don't know they're there unless you're looking for them. I did find one Bed and Breakfast that I thought had a lot of similarity to the property we're talking about tonight. It's a property at 68 East Cedar Street. If you're familiar with Cedar Street, it's just a block north of Oak. It's in the Gold Coast neighborhood. It's a very... it's a short street, doesn't extend for very long. It's heavily single-family, it is an historic district itself. And the property that I identified there that's a Bed and Breakfast has a street address of 68 East Cedar. It looks like a large vintage single-family home. It was built before the turn of the 20th century. And one of the reasons that I found it particularly useful for my analysis is that very adjacent to this property, two homes have sold. And that gave me an opportunity to sort of talk to the brokers on those transactions and get some information as to how both the buyers and the sellers of their properties factored this Bed and Breakfast into their transaction decisions. First, there was a home directly across the street from 60 East Cedar. It sold in 2007 for $2.5 million. I contacted the broker who represented the seller in that transaction and she said that the Bed and Breakfast was never an issue. No one even knew it was there, which is somewhat understandable because if you did not... if you were not looking for this as a Bed and Breakfast, you would never find it. You would have to sort of look very closely at the home. There's a small placard on the front of the house, sort of almost down, you know, below the level of the front door that indicates the name of the Bed and Breakfast. It's called the Flemish House. Says it's the Flemish House, that's all the... it's the only thing you would know to look for. She said it had no impact on the sale at all. At the present time, the home immediately adjacent to this Bed and Breakfast to the east at 60 East Cedar has been on the market for $3.6 million. It's now under contract. I don't know the contract price and I didn't inquire, the broker wouldn't tell me anyway. But she indicated to me that it has never been an issue in the sale of this house. This particular home, 60 East Cedar, has had a fairly long listing period and she attributed the length of the listing period to the fact that it was inappropriately priced for a substantial period of time in relation to the market and also that it was a little short of parking, which made it difficult to sell at the price it was initially asked. She sort of implied that the current contract is going to close quickly, so this will be a sale. She said no one ever knew or cared about the Bed and Breakfast. It was never mentioned to her by the seller and no buyer who ever looked at the house, including the buyer who's put it under contract, has ever mentioned it. So the similarities of this neighborhood to our, as I call it, the subject neighborhood are fairly significant and I anticipate that the operation of this Bed and Breakfast...
Sorry, what are the neighborhood similarities?
It's an historic district. It's a substantial number of very large, single-family homes that were constructed before the turn of the 20th century. It's a very exclusive street. Cedar's a very, very expensive street. I think my and I report, I looked at sort of the history of sales there and there've been sales for as much as $5 million for single-family homes here. So I mean, if I were to sort of leave the immediate neighborhood where the subject property is, which I have to do to find something similar, I think this neighborhood meets a lot of the kind of key parameters that distinguish the Forest Place neighborhood in terms of being very luxurious, very large homes, historic district and vintage construction that dates from before the turn of the 20th century, so...
Did you examine at all the effect that the conversion of 300 Church to a Bed and Breakfast has had or might have on the surrounding properties in its neighborhood?
I... that is certainly something I considered in my report. And I think one of the problems in terms of making a direct comparison is finding another location in the Chicago area where there are two Bed and Breakfasts proximate as 300 Church and the Forest Place property are going to be. I mean, although there are more Bed and Breakfasts than I thought there would be in the Chicago area, they're still a relatively limited type of property. They're not ubiquitous as they are, say, in New England. And so, as I addressed in my report, what I did do is I tried to look at other uses in Evanston that were allowed in residential districts as Bed and Breakfasts are, but would not necessarily be considered truly residential uses. And the only kind of land use I could find in the Evanston area or in the Evanston community that would sort of meet those parameters were churches. Churches are allowed in residential districts, they're not homes, they are traffic generators, both vehicular and pedestrian. And so, I identified an area that's actually... it's a very lovely area of Evanston that is between Lake and Greenwood, Oak and Maple. And in that area, there are three churches. One of them is a very large church on Lake, that's St. Mary's. Then there are two smaller churches on Greenwood, Emmanuel and St. Paul's. And there is a lot of interface between those properties and surrounding single-family homes. I looked at two single-family homes that were on Greenwood. One of them was across from Emmanuel, the other one was across from St. Paul's, they were down the street from the other one. I looked at the prices that they commanded and I evaluated whether I could distinguish anything about the pricing of that home that would cause me to conclude that the presence of these surrounding churches had any negative impact on the sale price. And when I looked at similar homes, physically similar, and when I looked at homes that sold in similar prices to these, I could not distinguish any diminution in value that I could reasonably attribute to the presence of these churches. And so, I can't answer your question directly using Bed and Breakfast, but I can sort of try and work with an analogous property type when there's a large concentration of them in a small area.
Do you consider the 300 Church property and the 1622 Forest property to be in the same neighborhood?
Yes, they're about 200 feet apart.
Okay. Did you consider... did you hear Ms. Overend's testimony that there had been some problems trying to sell the 1622 Forest property prior to their purchase?
I did hear her testimony and I did speak with a previous owner, Mr. Manazian, regarding that issue.
And do you think that there's any possibility that the characterization of 300 Church Street as a Bed and Breakfast had any effect on the ability to sell 1622 as a single-family home?
None, because Mr. Manazian has tried to list that home starting well before there was ever any plan for 300 Church. He told me that the property had been on the market for four years. He was a very motivated seller. And he said, I'm attempting to quote him, he said, you know, "People just don't live that way anymore. It's an enormous home." I mean, it is truly an enormous home. And he said, "I couldn't get a family to want to buy this because, you know, I guess maybe families aren't large enough, but also people aren't, you know, sort of in a financial position to take on a home of that size if you don't absolutely need it and then do the work that the home needed."
And if I could just interject a little bit, I don't have the full details on it, but I know one of the issues in the sale of 1622 were the number of mortgages on the property and there was a question of priority between two lenders. And so, I know that that caused a lot of difficulties in terms of clearing titles, so...
Just to get at what was introduced as Exhibit C, it's a report on Lindberger and Company LLC, Lederhead. Is that your company?
It is.
And is that the report you're referencing that gives your opinions that you're sort of summarizing for us?
It is.
Okay, and it's dated March 31, 2013. That's a couple of days ago. Is that when you wrote the report?
When I finished it, yes.
When did you start it?
Oh, I probably started it about two weeks prior to that.
I'm done for now.
Do you want to talk, because I'm sure you're going to hear about intensity of use?
Actually, I had a quick question, which I don't know that you'll ask, which is with respect to the property that is immediately to the north of 1622 Forest, or I guess are any other property, I mean, it kind of applies, but I'm thinking about it specific to that property is what conjured up the thought in my mind, which is, given the amount of restoration work and modification that needs to be done, we've talked about for this 1622 property, we're talking about a potential budget of double the purchase price for the property. So, does, in order for a property to be used as a Bed and Breakfast, do you believe that that property would need to be something that was attained below the regular market, you know, kind of below like the usual regular market value for maybe some of the other properties in an area in order for somebody to constitute that renovation cost?
Well, I would sort of point out a couple of things. Based on my experience, just knowing people who operate Bed and Breakfast and my one experience working with someone who wanted to purchase a Bed and Breakfast, Bed and Breakfasts are not moneymakers per se. What they are is a way to defray occupancy cost in a home. What they do is allow somebody to live somewhere for much less money than they would normally have to pay to live in a large and lovely home. I think, as Dawn Overend pointed out, there is no way this Bed and Breakfast turns this investment into a profit. It's not. You can't. I mean, this is... this is a very generous investment on the part of the owners to try and make this property a beautifully restored home. I think the most likely exit strategy would be to sell it to a homeowner. I doubt anyone else would buy this to operate it as a Bed and Breakfast. I really do.
But didn't you just say nobody lives like that anymore? So who's going to buy this house for eight point something million dollars to live in a house that's too big for someone to live in it?
Well, the hedge fund manager, I guess. I mean...
That was the commentary of the owner?
That was the commentary of the owner. That was his belief as to his problem.
Can I... I just wanted to, sorry, ask you another question about the comparables. Did you look at any other Bed and Breakfasts in Evanston, whether they were aggregated around other Bed and Breakfasts or not?
Well, the only one I could find was the Janet's Place property.
Which is what address?
It's in the 900 block of Hinman.
And what did you find with respect to that property?
It had no negative impact on anything, not at all.
Can you describe that property?
It is a masonry building, it's two stories. It's consistent with surrounding homes, I mean, but many of the buildings on this street are multifamily. It's sort of... it looks a little bit like a two-flat, but I think it is a single-family home.
So would you say it's a neighborhood of a much different character?
Mm-hmm. I would.
Did you have any further questions?
I just have a quick question. I think at the beginning, you said that your experience was in commercial?
Right.
So what exactly is your experience in evaluating residential property? We've seen all the data, all the information relative to commercial, but what specifically qualifies you to be establishing value for residential property?
Well, I'm not establishing value for residential property, I'm just...
Establishing effect on residential property?
It's the kind of research that I would do regularly. I worked on the... I worked on other projects in Evanston that were proposed and studied the impact on surrounding property values of them, so this is something I would typically do as a real estate appraiser.
Would you admit that the buyer for a residential property has very different goals and perspectives than a buyer for a commercial property?
Well, they're not usually the same buyer. If you're contrasting a commercial property with a single-family home, it's typically not the same buyer. And you see, I would not consider this Bed and Breakfast a commercial property per se. It's a single-family home where somebody's engaged in a Bed and Breakfast business that sort of defrays their occupancy costs. I would not consider this a commercial property.
But you just told us that this doesn't defray their occupancy cost, so this...
It does. I mean, it generates revenue that helps pay their taxes and their utilities.
It doesn't get them in the... it doesn't make them money, is what she's saying.
Helps them pay the heat bill.
Defray versus...
It's not a return on their investment. There's no way this Bed and Breakfast is an adequate return on the investment that's being made by this LLC to warrant doing it for the purpose of operating a Bed and Breakfast. It's simply not.
On a personal note, would you buy a house that's situated between two Bed and Breakfasts for $8 million?
You know, I probably would. If you barely notice the Bed and Breakfast is there, which I think will certainly be the case here, yes, I would. I mean, people... if there's someone who bought... who's going to buy a home that was listed at $3.6 million on Cedar Street, they'll probably pay less, but they'll be living right next door to a Bed and Breakfast. There's somebody across the street in their house at $2.5 million.
Why would they probably pay less?
Because it's... $3.6 million is the listing price. I doubt it's selling for the listing price.
Gotcha.
So, there are people out there with real money to spend and they're immediately proximate to a Bed and Breakfast and in no instance...
But are they immediately proximate to two Bed and Breakfasts?
Well, if a Bed and Breakfast has zero impact, I'd say two has two times zero impact. You know, you aren't even looking at what was here before, which was a rather lively and noisy house. I can't believe this Bed and Breakfast would be any noisier than the Manazians were. It won't be.
And I think, I mean, that was in fact why she extrapolated. We recognize the challenges of two adjacent Bed and Breakfasts and that's why we extrapolated the research. I will concede that a church is not a Bed and Breakfast, but again, they do share, you know, some common attributes.
Well, nor does somebody moving to the neighborhood of a church consider it anything like moving to the neighborhood of a Bed and Breakfast.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
A buyer, a potential buyer of the property views moving near a church in a much different way than they view moving to a licensed Bed and Breakfast hotel?
I would guess... what I would say here is I think we're... everybody has different interests or, you know, different thoughts on what their home. You would buy a different home than I would probably and sort of everybody else, you know, they've got different desires in a home. And so, I think if you're not... a church is much more identifiable. You know, again, Mary spoke with the two brokers that were purchasing... that were representing sellers of homes immediately adjacent to a Bed and Breakfast. Neither one of them said that it had... it entered the discussion at all as far as they knew, you know, affected the property.
Let me ask you this, wouldn't you expect a seller's broker to give you a positive opinion about the value of the property they're trying to sell?
No, I mean, I'm asking if this was an issue in selling the property and they said no. One of them's already sold, the other's under contract. They're not touting the value of the home they're selling. I'm asking, what did the Bed and Breakfast mean to the decision-making on the home you did sell?
How many rooms are in that Bed and Breakfast that you're using as a comp?
It has eight guest spaces.
All right, let me get back to these properties. Did you look at the value, the sale value of any other home in the neighborhood of 1622 Forest for its actual current value?
No.
Do you know how many of the homes in the immediate neighborhood have sold recently?
I have not researched sales in the neighborhood. The only one I'm aware of that has sold recently is the 300 Church property that was purchased by an LLC, which we've discussed several times.
Okay, so you're not aware of any other sales in the vicinity or if they were purchased by any other LLCs?
I don't know. I have not researched that, no.
Sorry, I won't ask the amount, but you were paid by the applicant to generate your opinion?
Yes.
Is that on an hourly rate or a flat fee?
Yes.
Beth, did you...
I was just going to say that any research into homes purchases in that neighborhood, if it was an LLC or not, wouldn't be relevant. A lot of higher net worth individuals will often purchase a home using an LLC as a method of the purchase. So you might, in that particular neighborhood, you might see numbers of LLCs as the owners of individual homes and it would not have any relevance on their plans or not plans for future use of the house.
To your point, and/or trusts.
Exactly.
Now, can I just ask whoever wants to answer this question, what is the motivation of the corporation to purchase these properties if they know going in they're not going to generate a profit?
What's the motivation of...
Correct.
Well, I think that Dawn needs a place to live. It's going to be her home, so, you know, that's, you know, one underpinning. I think when you also look at...
Excuse the microphone? Use the mic, please. It's just for the record.
My apologies. I think that, you know, Dawn, a single-family home, place for her to live, but I think on the other hand, if you look at many of the other projects, and we talked about this on 300 Church Street and you asked the same question, how is this going to make money? I think if you look at other properties that Colonel Pritzker has invested in, he's a preservationist. And I don't think, frankly, sometimes I have a hard time engaging in dialogue with him because profit, when it comes to historic preservation, is not always at the forefront of his mind. I think Mary stated it very well, is that the revenues from the B&amp;B will be an opportunity to defray some of the revenues, I'm sorry, to defray some of the costs, similar to cat's cradle. I'm sorry, not Cat's Cradle, but there's another home owned by Colonel Pritzker, the Emo-Bach House, which is in Rogers Park. And again, he's undertaking an extensive two-to-three million dollar renovation. There's only one person who was living in that home at the time, and we went through extensive efforts just to be able to utilize it for, for events, so that you could have dinner parties there, or if maybe somebody wanted to have a wedding there. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a large home. It's not very well-suited. It's got many small rooms, so it's not very well-suited for large parties, but it does have, it basically has three or four other lots immediately to the south. And again, that was just an opportunity to generate some income, to defray the costs of maintaining the Emo-Bach House. You know, it's, it's enormously expensive year in, year out to maintain a structure like that. And so I think that when you look at something like 300 Church Street, the question was asked, it's an opportunity to defray costs, but at the end of the day, it is, part of it is a labor of love on behalf of a preservationist.
Isn't part of being a preservationist, though, preserving the use of the property? I mean, if Evans, if, if a "preservationist," quote-unquote, wanted to preserve the look of every property along Sheridan Road but commercialize it all, do you think that would be considered preservationism?
I think that you can look at preservationism in a number of respects. And I think that here, we're maintaining the essence of what this home is, which is a single-family home. So I would say, yes, that's consistent with the notion of preservation. Frankly, I think if Colonel Pritzker doesn't make the investment in this home, it won't be here in a hundred years. I think that's a fairly accurate statement. And so you lose that. I think a similar statement could be made about 300 Church Street. Without this type of investment, the things that this city holds so dear in its historic districts will go away without this type of investment.
I'm not sure this sort of preservation is, is, is keeping, is taking into account the effect it has on the community. Because it's more than just the return on investment, and it's more than just having a place to live for an owner who wants to run a B&amp;B. It's what does this do to the community? And the community has said that they're not so happy with this. So it seems to be contrary to the idea of preservation when you're, when you're going against what the rest of the community says. Just my two cents. You don't have to respond to that.
I'm not going to, so.
All right.
Could we just make one more point? Because I am sure you're going to hear about intensity of use. So I would like Ms. Lindberger to advise you of her conversations with the former owner, the number of people that live there, so that you do have a flavor of what was going on at this property.
Yeah, looking at the time, I would like to conclude Ms. Lindberger's testimony then.
It'll be quick.
Be very quick.
Less than a minute.
I spoke with Mr. Manazian. As has been mentioned, he had six children living there. Mr. Manazian moved in in 1986. The home was sold in 2012. During that period of time, he lived there with his wife, and his mother, and his six children in the main house. And he had a couple and a, with two dogs who were tenants in the coach house. He said that his children were quite noisy, that one of his children belonged to a band. They practiced in the basement during the winter, and they played outdoors during the summer. He had a basketball court behind the house. He said the place was extremely noisy, and he found it very annoying. But that he had never received any complaints from his neighbors to the south, who are the Ishmaels, and apparently they have lived there during the entire period of his ownership and lived there prior to his ownership. Or the Connellys to the north, who lived there, he'd say, he would say, as he characterized it, during the height of his ownership. He entertained extensively. As people are aware, he has a luxury carpet and rug business on Chicago Avenue. He said he often had parties for 50 or 60 people, where he had caterers come and serve dinner. He never received complaints as a result of those. He said that he used off-duty policemen to park cars in the neighborhood because he had so many visitors that the, the immediate area couldn't accommodate the cars. He said that he could not imagine this Bed and Breakfast generating a higher occupancy rate than he did with his, even his own family, to say nothing of his children's friends. And he can't imagine the Bed and Breakfast creating any more noise than he did.
Are there any other questions from Ms. Lindberger, from the board? Do you think you will have them in the future? Then what I'm going to do right now, actually, if I can, so that we free Ms. Lindberger, is ask, are there any questions from the audience for this witness? Okay, seeing, note for the record that I see none. Thank you. Noting the time that we are at, I think that we are going to have to conclude for this evening and continue this matter to our next meeting, which, what are we looking at date-wise?
I would, I would actually like to hear from the people who are here, even if it's just briefly, because they have sat through three hours of our exciting meeting. And I think it's only fair that they be able to say what they have to say, and we not ask them to come back out for a second meeting.
I agree, but can we really, really strongly enforce the, what we try to do with comments, which is, you know, don't repeat yourself. If somebody else has said it just the same way you said it, you were planning on saying it, you can stand up and say, "I agree with the previous speaker," because otherwise we will go. And if we, if we open this right now to comments and we get into a situation where we're having a lot of repetitive comments, we're going to go till midnight.
Is that the desire of the board?
It's my desire, but I, do we know how many, how many additional witnesses you have, if any?
Mr. Scott?
We've concluded our case.
Okay. So generally speaking, Mr. Scott, Scott has concluded his case. So is that, are we-
Yes.
Okay, all right. So hearing the rest of my board members, we will open up to public comment. We do, as Mayor Clinton said, ask that if you, if you agree with the statements of your, of your neighbors or other people that have presented, it's perfectly okay to state your name and address and, and agree with those. And with that, and of course, if you, if you are going to, we will have plenty of discussion next time, and if you would like to participate at that time and be able to, then we certainly would encourage that. So if, but if you do wish to speak to us tonight so that you don't have to come back, then please step forward.
Thank you. My name is David Reynolds. I live in very close proximity to this house at 204 Davis Street, and I want to thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. The issues with Mr. Pritzker's first B&amp;B were well-described at your meetings in August of 2011, when he applied for his first special use permit, and you recommended to the city council that it be denied. With the sole exception of parking, all the problems of that first proposal remain with this second, are indeed magnified, and are joined by another important issue. One problem which remains is the fact that a B&amp;B is a commercial use in a residential zone. Our zoning ordinance places restrictions on businesses in residential zones through the home occupation section. While I realize that a B&amp;B is not a home occupation under our zoning ordinance, while it is under many zoning ordinances, these two uses are similar in many ways. Each is a business. Each allows employees, and each allows customers. Home occupations are rather tightly regulated in Evanston because they have the ability to interfere with normal living in a residential neighborhood. A B&amp;B under our existing ordinance, or an existing home occupation ordinance, wouldn't come close to being allowed, because in a home occupation, you can have no clients between 9:00 PM and 7:00 AM. The area of the home used for business purposes cannot exceed 25% of the total. You can have only a maximum of two non-resident employees, a maximum of six clients at one time, and a maximum of three deliveries per week. Another remaining problem is the business structure. When B&amp;Bs were added to our zoning ordinance as a special use in 1993, the intent was to allow a family with grown children to rent a few extra rooms to help defray the cost of their home. Business operations here are entirely different and go beyond anything the zoning ordinance ever envisioned. These are LLCs, and they are LLCs in which the non-resident owner owns 99%, and the resident operator owns 1%. Further, an LLC is totally opaque. These owners could sell their interests and leave these operations altogether. They could sell their shares to anyone, including a corporation, and no need to ever know. I believe when 300 Church was before you, there was testimony given by the applicant that either Ms. Overend or her sister would always be in residence at 300 Church, and that this Ms. Overend would, would spell her sister when her sister couldn't be there. So it's going to be sort of tough for, for them to be relieved. If they're relieving each other, they won't actually be the owner-occupier in the house. The important new issue is addressed by the Special Use Standard C, which deals with cumulative effect of special uses in an area. It reads, "It will not cause a negative cumulative effect when its effect is considered in conjunction with the cumulative effect of various special uses of all types on the immediate neighborhood, and the effect of the proposed type of special use upon the city as a whole." Two B&amp;Bs, two doors apart in a residential neighborhood, will certainly have a negative cumulative effect. They will commercialize one end of that block and preclude families, the normal occupants of a residential zone, from building the fabric of a neighborhood. There is a telling point about this Standard C. As you probably know, after the council approved the special use, overrode you and approved the special use on 300 Church, the Plan Commission spent months evaluating the B&amp;B ordinance in order to recommend to city council how to resolve the issues of ownership, density of B&amp;Bs, and frequency of special events, among other things. Ultimately, the council decided to refer the ordinance back to staff for more information, and voted down the Plan Commission's recommendations as they stood then. In so doing, they voted down, at least for the time, the distance requirement between B&amp;Bs, which the Plan Commission had recommended. At that time that it was voted down, at least one council member said that Standard C of the special uses would provide adequate future protection for neighborhoods. It is my view that two B&amp;Bs, two doors away from one another in a residential neighborhood, will have a negative cumulative effect. From a resident's point of view, and contrary to Mr. Scott's assertion that the cumulative effect of two B&amp;Bs may actually be positive, common sense says otherwise. The applicant has said much about the restoration of these homes. While it is well-done, these houses do not need Mr. Pritzker or a B&amp;B to be saved. Not a single home in this neighborhood, and I've lived in this neighborhood for almost 40 years, has fallen into irreparable disrepair. In every instance before this, the market has sorted out an appropriate sales price, and a family has bought the home. These family owners have typically invested large sums to renovate or upgrade their home, their new home. Not another single house in this neighborhood has had to be turned into a B&amp;B to be saved. When realistically priced, every home sells to a family, and if realistically priced, these would have too. Special Use Standard D addresses surrounding property values, and reads, "It does not interfere with or diminish the value of property in the neighborhood." Ms. Lindberger says, in her professional judgment, that a second B&amp;B will not diminish surrounding property values. Please consider her testimony here in August of 2011 about 300 Church Street, when she said there are no comps with B&amp;Bs next to them. I would say that using Cedar Street in Chicago is neither a comp as well. So in fact, we really don't know what effect this would have on neighborhood property values. Somebody brought up the question as to whether or not there had been any other home sales in the area. There have been two home sales on this block, one in the last six months and one in the last year and a half. Taking, again, the common sense approach, imagine that you own the beautiful and carefully restored yellow Victorian house between Mr. Pritzker's two B&amp;Bs. Do you think that the value of your home would not be diminished by having a B&amp;B rather than a family on either side of you? Unless, of course, it ultimately becomes one more of Mr. Pritzker's B&amp;Bs. And what about the rest of the neighborhood? If two B&amp;Bs aren't considered to have a negative cumulative effect, how many will it take? Mr. Pritzker now, now owns four homes on this block, and has recently purchased a fifth home in Evanston on the lake, on Lake Shore Boulevard. These are in addition to the two homes on Sheridan Road and Rogers Park described earlier, which are, are becoming B&amp;Bs or event venues. How many in Evanston would be detrimental? How many B&amp;Bs in Evanston would be detrimental to their neighborhood and to the community? In August 2011, for 300 Church, Mr. Scott testified for Mr. Pritzker, testified for Mr. Pritzker, said there did not exist a grand plan to create a string of B&amp;Bs in the area. Here we are, just over a year and a half later with number two. Everything about this proposal seems wrong. The business structure totally different from what the zoning ordinance envisioned, and creating what amounts to small hotels. The concentration of businesses in one area, the needless conversion of B, to B&amp;Bs in a healthy neighborhood. I hope you will protect this neighborhood and others in Evanston by deciding that a second B&amp;B so close to the first constitutes a negative cumulative effect. Thank you very much. I have two letters from neighbors that I would like to read, if I may, please.
Actually, why don't we take those into the record?
Okay.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to note that Mr. Reynolds has provided us with copies of letters from Jess and Lisa Sherborne from 1513 Forest Avenue. And I think it says Phyllis and Richard Schwartz at 1418 Forest Avenue. And I'm going to put these in as appellate A. Sorry. Thank you, sir. Was there anybody else who wished to speak to us or adopt Mr. Reynolds?
I certainly shan't be that long. My name is Oliver Gould. I live at 1730 Hinman Avenue. Been there for 14 years. And I just am very much concerned with the sensitivity to this neighborhood. We are one half a block from the commercial part of Evanston, and we are a very, very suburban, rural, almost rural, street district. But we are, have to fight against the incursion of only a half a block away from where we are. But we are on a beautiful street, and as the agents who talk to me about the place say, "It's location, location, location." Above all, I want to thank you all for sitting here through all of this thing, for, as you do night after night after night, for this and here. We appreciate it as part of Evanston. I think that I would repeat and emphasize what the gentleman just before me said. We are concerned about our neighborhood. I would also add one other quick set of numbers to you that perhaps you may have considered or not. You've got an investment of 8.3 million dollars. The cost of that money is, with Pritzker's hope and help, let's put it at 3%, which would be a quarter of a million dollars a year. The bed and breakfast, at 150 to 300 a night, I estimated from listening to this discussion, at 250 a night per room. 80% occupancy, which would leave, come to approximately $600,000 of income for the year. Expenses, I would assume a 50% gross profit margin. I think I'm being very generous, but a 50% gross profit margin means they would then come up with $300,000 versus $240,000 for the cost of money alone. I don't see how you can afford to do that unless you're willing to invest personal funds in there today. I am very much afraid for the part of Evanston that this area covers, and I think that you folks, please, consider that significantly in terms of what the future wonderful neighborhood of that area is. Drive through it if you haven't, or walk through it. It's very nice, and I'd like to keep it that way. Do not bed and breakfast with traffic and people. Thank you all for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
Hello, I'm Alice Agley. I live at 324 Davis Street, and my neighbors have spoken very well, so I will speak very briefly in support of them. I and my husband own a house very close on Davis Street to the bed and breakfast that we have already into the proposed one. And, you know, we bought into an R1 neighborhood, and I think you know the definition of an R1 neighborhood. It's single-family residential district intended to provide for single-family development at the lowest density within the city. And I feel that we are being threatened, and in a sense betrayed, by the city to allow bed and breakfasts of very high-density use to come into this neighborhood. So you've done it once, the city's done it once, but to do it a second time, right in the same block, I think is stunning, a stunning kind of a deviation from the understanding that we have, that we all had when we bought into this single-family neighborhood. It will change the character of the neighborhood. And as others have said, it's not what the framers of these ordinances had in mind. They had in mind a mom and pop, you know, operation, where the kids have left, and then you rent a few rooms. It's not that. This is a large, very wealthy corporation evidently that's buying multiple homes in our neighborhood. And I would expect more proposals for more bed and breakfasts if you go along with this kind of dense setting of beds and breakfasts along the same street, right, almost right next to one another. So I find it highly inappropriate. I think there will be negative impact. I find that, with all due respect to the real estate judgment we've had, I found that highly subjective, with really no good comparison, and somewhat under the employ of the person who wants to have this, this development. So I think there would be a negative impact, and I do object to this kind of development. The corporation can buy many lovely homes and neighborhoods of Evanston and put their beds and breakfasts around Evanston and other spots, so as not to really commercialize heavily just this one neighborhood. It can be done elsewhere. There are many beautiful, lovely homes for sale, and so they could be placed elsewhere. So I urge you to oppose this proposal.
Thank you. Hello.
Hi. My name's Catherine Stalkup. I live at 144 Greenwood Street, and I am merely saying that I agree very much with the previous statements, but I wanted to show my face and say it instead of just nodding.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Was there anybody else who wished to make sure they spoke to us this evening? Okay, seeing none, then we will continue this matter to our next meeting. I'm going to throw out there a couple of things, though, that I would like to see. If we could get a map with the, are you ready? Sorry.
Melissa's hand has fallen off, so she needs medical attention.
A map of the, or I could send you an email, but I'm going to just say it out loud here. A map with the, there's a version of the map that has like the house numbers of the various houses around, and that would be helpful to me.
Instead of this one?
Yeah. So a version, one of those versions would be helpful to me for the next meeting. I would also like to try to pull up a transcript or recording from our previous discussion on our findings related to 300 Church, to refresh my memory on that issue, at least the portion of the final discussion through the vote portion. And because I sense that there will be discussion with respect to the cumulative effect and the closeness of various things, I would be interested to understand the, at very least, even though it was turned down by council, the ordinance that was presented to them via the Plan Commission, just to get an idea of where discussion from the community ended up in terms of the suggestion of distance. And with that, what's our next meeting? April 23rd? Mr. Scott, are you able to join us on April 23rd? Okay, with that, is there a motion regarding continuing this matter?
In the matter of 13ZMJV 0017 regarding 1622 Forest Place, I would move that we continue all further discussion until our meeting on April 23rd, which will be here in council chambers at 7:30.
Second. Been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion is carried unanimously. Is there anything further before we adjourn? Seeing none, then we are adjourned for the evening.